Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for June 1st, 10:00 a.m. This is a review session, so no public testimony will be taken at this moment. The following cases will be adjourned. 825-86BZ, 1703 Bronxdale Avenue, Borough of the Bronx. 2019-16BZ, 25001 Northern Boulevard, Queens. 2019-27BZ, 4533 Eighteenth Avenue, Brooklyn. And 2019-203BZ, 144-43 Farmers Boulevard, Queens. Okay, the decision items. 2018-145BZ, 251-73 Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
Okay, just want to... So plans were provided with the notes as requested, but we had coordination issues, I believe, that weren't resolved. Though, we did have an issue with the engineering letter, and I want to... And it was modified, but I want to check with Commissioner Sheta that it is okay.
Do we need to reopen?
No, not... No, no, no. This is a review session, so let's just hear...
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Sorry.
Could you unmute yourself, Commissioner Sheta, and just let me know whether you saw the engineering update? I think it has the language you requested.
I did, and I'm okay with it. Yep.
Okay, so the... Thank you. The coordination issues, though, had to do with the charts, which I believe were not updated, right? That's Darrell, right? Can you unmute yourself and just...
Yes, Frank sent me an email this morning asking if you'd run it. He said he won't be able to... It wasn't maybe updated by this morning decision. He said if you would need to defer it, they just want to be on to the next hearing date for the decision.
Okay, so certainly because we have inconsistencies in the materials that council relies on, we need to get the... We need to defer it. I don't know whether we'll be able to put it on for next hearing, but we'll see. Are any other commissioners have comments on this one? I'm seeing no hands up from any commissioners, correct? Okay, all right.
Next item is 2019-21BZ, 223 East 14th Street, Brooklyn.
Yeah, so, and similarly, this one I found problematic in the submission. There's someone in the waiting room, Vicky Garvey. We're not... This is a review session. Please hang up and don't call in until we have called your case for hearing. This is a review session. It's closed to the public's participation. With respect to this one, the statement of facts was, and the drawings were submitted without a cover letter. Sort of note to all of the project managers, we should never accept a submission without a cover letter because it doesn't explain what the changes are. The statement of facts is 22 pages long, and so what are we supposed to do? Read through it and compare to the other one for 22 pages? I don't understand that. And the same for the plans. The plan says 26 pages long. I don't know why it was resubmitted. It was heavily bubbled, so there were bubbles in places where we weren't expecting any changes. There's like bubble around an entire area. So I'm very uncomfortable about voting on this because what changed? So, and I didn't expect to see so many changes on this submission. We asked for very little, right? I think there was just a question about the floor area in the attic, and that was it. So, and the only... And the open question was only the structural headroom in the attic. That's actually what we were looking for, but meanwhile, it's a gigantic set of other changes. I'm going to just unmute commissioners or ask them to unmute. They're all muted themselves. If you have any comments on this application.
No, my comment was, I wanted to get a clear understanding of the floor area, especially the floor area that is below, you know, that would be counted towards in the attic room. And I looked at the drawing specifically. I just focused on the attic, and that was okay, but I... I'll defer to you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I think that maybe if we reopen during the hearing, they may be able to point out what the changes were, and we could take that as their sworn statement that these are the only changes. And if we're satisfied with the floor area, maybe we can then see how we want to move forward.
Okay, you know, my concern is always that our...
Do we have a clean set?
I don't know if we have a clean set. I'd need to look. But my concern is always that our council reviews to make sure that it's okay to close, and not knowing what the changes were, there wasn't time to review it. So Commissioner Oatley-Brown, did you want to add anything?
I have no additional comments.
Okay, and Commissioner Sheta?
Yes, I would prefer not to vote on it to just remind the applicant. I believe we spoke about this last hearing and the hearing before. We had other people who submitted without cover letter, and we said this is not acceptable. I'm not feeling comfortable, like, reviewing this on the fly or even just listening to what the applicant's going to say. We can not give them hard time by, like, assigning this for the next hearing. It's a decision. It's not a big deal. But, like, listening, just listening to the applicant and buying what he's saying on the fly, it shouldn't be... We shouldn't, like, sit the... This case as a norm for the upcoming cases. If we do so, I'm afraid that everybody's going to submit without cover, and then we have to look at it on the fly.
Right, and by the way, you know, we used to do it when we had the in-person hearings on the fly, where it was easy for us to review the drawings as they talked, but it's very difficult to do that in this context. And I... And by the way, I think having this time for council to review the applications prior to a decision is very helpful in ensuring that the resolutions, that there isn't confusion when they write the resolutions, so...
I just want to add that I... This is... I don't want to look like I'm aggressive against applicants. I know this is hard time with the current circumstances. I did try to look at the changes and flip through the drawings and the statement of facts, looking at the previous notes on my Word file, but I couldn't figure this out. And it took me, I actually wasted like half an hour looking at everything. If the applicant, like, did help us by writing a small cover letter, probably it's going to take him like 10 minutes.
Yes.
10 minutes of his time equal probably five times half an hour of our time, and he is successful to give us the idea. And I believe the majority of us were not successful to figure out what's going on. So just, I want to explain why I'm insisting on getting a cover for whatever submission.
Right, and I have to say also that the next application, they submitted a very clear cover letter. It's really easy to find your way through, and then you can say, "Oh, they made that change." "Oh," you know, like that. And so that's the minimum standard. It's not acceptable to just throw us a pile of stuff. Go figure it out. Okay, and Darrell has his hand up. You're muted yourself there.
I just got an email from the applicant. He said he wasn't... He's not sure why the cover letter wasn't included in his submission. He just sent it just now, but I just want to...
Okay, so he thinks, he's implying that he did send the cover letter and get it?
Yeah, that's what he's saying, yeah.
That's confusing because we got everything else, so, okay.
This happened with another case at the last hearing, where also all the final items were submitted except was missing a cover letter. And the cover letter somehow there didn't make it into our submission file.
Right. I didn't really understand, though, that, you know, the applicant is responsible for hitting the send button on the submit, so why would we not get some things and get other things? And I think then it's just transferred right into the folder. So I don't know, maybe Carlo could take a look at that, but I'm not really sure why there would be an issue. Yeah, Commissioner Sheta, you're muted. You're muted yourself.
If he has it, have him email it to us from now and until we get to, like, within the next half an hour or so. If it's easy to look at it and flip through the drawings. If we have something in writing, it's easy to follow. If I'm listening to somebody, I wouldn't take that.
Right, no, but I don't feel comfortable about that because that's still reviewing the drawings on the fly. And we're going to be continuing through this hearing, and we need to be focusing on other cases. So I don't like the idea of reviewing things on the fly and...
Okay.
So, okay, we can move on to the next.
2019-22BZ, 24-47 95th Street, Queens.
Okay, so in this case, model citizen, the requested notes about the pavers were added to the drawings, and the changes bubbled, very clearly bubbled, and a cover letter was provided to indicate the changes. So are there any other comments on this? Otherwise, I would like to bring it to a vote. Okay, so then I'd like to make... Everyone has muted themselves, so you should unmute yourselves so you can vote. Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
So this is granted? Okay, item number eight, 2019-26BZ, 233 Nevin Street, Brooklyn.
Let's see. We were just actually on this one, waiting to update the EAS. I did have a question about that Chase is going to, needs to respond to. I guess it was Chase and Jello. We had a question about the application referring to Lot 6, whereas the... Whereas there's a reference to Lot 1, and Lot 6 is the only objection that we have from DOB, so...
So the only information I have is that Lot 6 and Lot 1 are in common ownership and will be merged into one zoning lot. But I don't have a response from the applicant about whether they will be merged into one tax lot, which would...
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's actually an issue if it's going to be merged into one zoning lot, but that our grant is only for Lot 6 because that's all that was on the objection. What do we do? Can council respond to this?
Could we have the applicant tell us their intentions at the hearing with respect to what they're going to do with the tax lots? And then if they are going to merge it into one tax lot, that would potentially solve any issue.
Okay, so then these cases that we're deferring, we can move into having a conversation with the applicant, and maybe we can then vote on them, assuming there's no changes. I don't want to have any changes on the materials. We have a conversation about it. So Tony, note that we're going to be calling these deferred items in hearing for conversation, but no, we can't vote on anything that requires a submission.
Okay.
Thanks. And my understanding with this is we did receive the final EAS, correct? So is true?
Yes, that's correct. It is acceptable, yes.
Great, okay. All right.
Okay, next item is 2019-76BZ, 1973 East 16th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, the requested change to drawing A11 was made and a cover letter provided to explain it. Thank you very much for doing that. So then, yeah, so then I would like to bring this to a vote. So please, commissioners, unmute yourselves. And I therefore would like to make a motion to grant on the usual condition with respect to removal of existing material. But in this case, it's really just a rear yard extension, so it's not quite the same degree of concern. But anyway, that's a standard, no.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
That's granted. Okay, the next item is 2019-202BZ, 2218 East 3rd Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, this one I also had problems with, and maybe it's on...
Oh!
What happened?
No, I thought this was fine.
So I thought it was fine until I reviewed it, right? So I didn't expect, okay? So applicant provided a cover letter describing the submission in detail. That's good. A 1950 Sanborn map was provided showing the front yard reduced by one-story structure at this site and several adjacent areas, so it establishes the reduced front yard. Plans from 2010 that are described as DOB-approved plans, though they're so light, I can't see the DOB preparation or approval stamp, nor whether the job was self-certified. However, they show the second floor being extended, so the second floor is extended towards the front yard, but held back to the required 10-foot setback distance, which is as of right. And I just want to clarify for our council, who gave, sent me a note that the existing front yard, according to the plans, is 8 foot 10 inches at the first floor and 10 feet at the second floor, and there is a mistake on the zoning analysis form, so just as a notation. The reason, and maybe I'm misremembering the discussion, and so please jump in if you remember otherwise. A six-foot-deep greenhouse was added to the rear yard, which was not on the previous set of drawings. We closed the hearing, so there weren't supposed to have been any substantive changes. That was a substantive change. And so the greenhouse is a permitted obstruction in a rear yard, so, okay, but it counts as floor area, which I believe is still remains under the maximum allowable in this district. But more importantly, it also counts as lot coverage, which is what we're waiving. So all, so the review would need to reflect that increased waiver request. The other thing is that lot coverage on the drawings was reduced by 5%, and I don't see what changed. Why would it... When you look at the roof, it's the same amount of coverage. So why would lot coverage have reduced? If anything, it would have gone up because of the greenhouse. So that, that's... I don't know what's up with that. So, and also, there's a mistake on the floor area calculations for the enlargement on AP 102. The numbers don't add up to what it says on that column. So, yeah, it needs correction and an explanation, you know, maybe... Does anybody remember us talking about the greenhouse?
I have it in my notes.
What do you have in your notes?
Subject to DOB greenhouse, "Don't show on the..." Something about, "Don't show the outline." That's what I have a note of, but I saw, I have, clearly I have greenhouse on my notes here.
Yeah, but either it's "Don't show it," or they add...
No, I know. I just, yeah. The attic, let's see. Yeah, they had to...
We were just asking them to prove that the front yard extension is a legal, non-compliant condition.
Right, they needed to say on one map.
Right, and to clarify the waivers that were proposed. That was what I was asking about last time, is like, can't really tell why you need these waivers. So they kind of clarified that on the drawings. And we also noted inconsistencies in the measurements of existing and proposed.
Right, dimensions off existing on the footprints on the proposed plan.
So I was surprised unless somebody else who wants to unmute themselves remembers differently, but I was surprised to see this greenhouse thrown in and then the numbers changing from what was previously approved. And happily, those changes were bubbled, so it was easy to find what the changes were. But then I'm like, well, why did they change? There was no change in the lot coverage. Couldn't have gone down. It would have gone up if you're including the greenhouse, and the drawings say the greenhouse is not included in the calculations. But then I am confused about that because this is an increase in the allowable lot coverage waiver. So how can you reply for a greenhouse without asking us for additional waiver, which is not being asked for? I don't even understand that. So the greenhouse is floor area. This house is under the maximum floor area because of the special...
In my notes, I have that the special permit was needed for the attic, and the lot coverage was... Lot coverage was added because of the objection that was raised by the plan examination, examiner, sorry.
Yeah.
And that they have the certificate of occupancy, which can prove with regards to the front yard being a legal front yard.
Not CO, no, Sanborn map. CO doesn't prove that you can have...
And also, we'll look for a pre-61 Sanborn map to verify the front yard, but they said that based on EO, they're quite sure that it's a legally conforming front yard. And so that's really what I have in my notes.
Yeah.
And we had said at the review session was that no FAR waiver is required. It's as of right, and they need to demonstrate that the covered porch in the front yard is permitted. As of right, side yard needs clarification, and the special district does not provide for lot coverage.
Right, so I don't see any mention of throwing in a greenhouse. It's true that I didn't listen to the video, but at the same time, now I have all these questions about the greenhouse. To expedite this in their place, I would just take the greenhouse out and explain to us why the lot coverage went down, even though they're not including the greenhouse. And then we would be able to close it next week without reopening the hearing and reconsidering and blah, blah, blah. Like, why do you need this? You know, that's what I would do in their place, anyway. Okay, any other comments? Everybody's muted themselves, so if you have comments, unmute. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay, next item?
Yeah.
Okay, 2019-272BZ, 606th Avenue, Manhattan.
Okay, as requested, we received a letter from the management company that the PCE, that this is a legalization, has not been a disturbance to neighbors, or at least the management company hasn't received complaints. I just want to have council, our council, note the operating hours that are on the cover letter. It says Monday to Saturday, 5:30 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And that's indicated on the most recent set of submitted plans, but just to close that loop, okay? And that was it. So any other, any comments from anybody about this now? So then I'd like to, so please unmute yourself. I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Everybody muted?
Yeah, Commissioner Shabeta?
Commissioner Shabeta?
Sometimes it disagrees.
Okay.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Oatley-Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Application's granted. Okay, special order calendar, continued hearing items, 6796BZ, 210 East 86th Street, Manhattan. This is a review session. No public testimony.
Oops, sorry. Okay, with this one. The applicant is no longer requesting an amendment to reduce the number of seats in the theater, though you would think that under these current situations, they would want to reduce the number of seats in the theater. But I understand why they might be reconsidering how they're going to lay it out. Maybe they want a lot of seats so that they can use that as a method to distance. I don't know. So the request before us is actually now only an extension of term. Last term was for a period of 20 years. You know, the thing is, on 80, this is a through lot. It goes from 86th to 85th Street. 86th Street is Commercial Street, and 85th Street, you're not aware that there's a theater on that side. So you actually don't experience the commercial use on the residential street because that's in an RAB, I think. The waiting area calculations were provided as requested. I believe Commissioner Oatley-Brown requested those, and they provided them. So other than that, I think we're good. Anybody have comments on this? Please unmute yourself if you have comments. Ms. Oatley-Brown?
Yes, did we ever get a proof of continuous use? Because it expired in, I think, December 2016, December 17, 2016.
There was some litigation, though, so I don't... Hmm.
I didn't see it addressed in the statement, nor was there a discussion of a hardship should the variance not be allowed to be continued.
Oh, dear. This update does not... Okay. Okay. So, you know, I'm just looking at the movie studio that shut down several months ago. They said, actually, it was a year ago. After years of litigation and Marshall's Order issued in June 2019, no construction work. These are my notes. It, yeah. I don't have notes that say actually when it stopped functioning as a theater. My recollection is it's like less than a year, but I could be wrong. So, and they applied in, they submitted this in 2016, but then they got a dismissal warning in 2017. So, and it, so they submitted in time, but at the same time, it's been four years since or almost...
Well, there was litigation back in... There was some litigation going on. The tenant, the tenant, I believe the, correct me if I'm wrong, the tenant prevailed, and then I think the owner went back, and they appealed it. So there was litigation in the midst of this, so, while it was in the application.
Does litigation stay the tolling of the time period? Does council, our council, know the answer to this?
I don't know if it does it on that. I know on variances, but severance.
I don't believe so for the board's rules.
Say it again?
I don't believe so for the board's rules.
All right, but in any event, you could certainly say, it seems, you know, this is in my neighborhood. I'm sure I've been to a film there in the last year ago, so I thought it was more recently than that, actually. That's why I was kind of surprised to see it shut down. But anyway, okay, all right. Okay, we can move on.
So, just for, I'm sorry, just for the comparison, are we asking for a continuous use proof, or are we not?
Yes, yes, that's part of the findings of extension of time of term, right?
But they did file for the extension of the term before the 1996 variance.
We always ask for proof of continuous use from the date of the expiration of the term until we're kind of standing before you, right? We always say that, you know, even though you, because in this case, they submitted four years ago, and then nothing happened. So what if it was abandoned during that time? That's not continuous use.
Madam Chair, again, I don't know how relevant this is, but we had this discussion before regarding that really the extension of the term is for that portion really in the residential. That's the remaining portion of the...
Yes, thank you, yeah.
Where the theater is a, was a non-conforming use at the time of the variance. I just wanted to remind the board that. Where the theater is a, it was a nonconforming use at the time of the variance. I just wanted to remind the board that.
Yes, right.
Right, but if.
Go ahead, sorry.
If it's legally nonconforming, doesn't it still have to provide proof that it is in continuous use? Because if it's discontinued for more than two years, don't they lose the right for a legal nonconforming use?
But even though when there it was because of some litigation reason?
No, 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 slow down. Okay, one, one thing at a time. The first is this variance allowed the theater to expand, right? So though some of it was illegal, nonconforming use. Some of it, the the variance will allow the commercial use to expand in the.
Into the rear area.
Right? Above that building is a residential building which is permitted in the district, right? So, um, no matter what, as Commissioner Otley Brown said, even if it was relying on a statutory. Nonconforming condition, it couldn't have abandoned the use. But in our case, we we granted a variance to extend the use, so we also have the continuous use. Now, the now the issue of of, I don't think that the litigation in this case, it's an interesting subject. But I don't think in this case it's going to affect it because I'm pretty certain that. Um, the theater was open within the last year. So, um, so therefore, you know, I I don't think it's going to affect this case. But i- if litigation, for instance, prevented the theater from opening. That might be viewed as a different thing. I think we, didn't that happen in a, the Chumlee case? Where the.
That was, um, government mandated repairs.
Oh, okay, so that's.
Yeah, it's totally different.
Right, okay. To go there on this because I don't actually think that's an issue, but um. But we we need to hear from them about continuous use. It's a missing element in the papers.
Okay, so.
Element. I don't have any notes that there were continuous use discussed. Yeah. Okay.
Move on?
Yep.
Forty, item thirteen forty-two ninety-seven B Z ninety-three twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. Um. On May thirteenth, the our project manager sent a note to the applicant noting that the plans were not signed and sealed. And that proof of continuous use was not provided, although we had requested that at the last hearing. To my knowledge, nothing was was submitted in response. The folder contains a chart entitled quote rent roll.
Yeah, that's what came in.
Cover letter, um, explaining its significance, um, and that was submitted on May eighteenth. Rent roll isn't proof of continuous use and but especially if it's a chart that you made yourself, right? It's different than showing that you received rents and some kind of official printout from an accounting source or something like that. Um, there's also something called a lease abstract, which also doesn't establish continuous use. Since you can have a lease and not occupy with use, which we've discussed many times, right? Um, we really had asked for and could have gotten, um, Google Street imagery since the expiration of the term. Um, was March twenty eighteen and that would have been enough. And that's what Commissioner Otley Brown specifically asked for that last time. It would have been one, two, three, you get Google Street imagery, right? Um, as requested, though, the plans were revised to more clearly show the location of the district boundary line. Where the use is permitted as of right. It shows that a maximum of twenty feet extend beyond the C one district boundary line. So the drugstore use that was the subject of the variance is actually permitted as of right on the site under seventy-seven dash eleven. Um, so, uh, there wasn't any explanation of therefore why the applicant is still before us. And we discussed that at the last hearing, and so here we're forced to do our own detective work, right? So, um, I'm guessing based on the zoning calculation chart. That the noncompliances, uh, that still need to be covered under this variance or with a variance are. Um. Lot coverage and side yard, but the applicant helped us not one bit figure that out. I'm not even sure it's true because I don't know when this building was built, et cetera, et cetera. Because it might have predated zoning, um, those sixty-one zoning or the zoning district or something. Um. Both side lot lines are shared with residential uses, so now assuming the variance continues to be before us. Um, both side lot lawns are shared with residential uses, so the landscaping needs to be improved at the parking area. A photo showing what is happening in the alleyway at the back of the building that adjoins the residential properties was provided. Um, and there are floodlight lights back there that are mounted very high. Um, I'd like to know what they're for and when they operate. Um, and if they're there for safety reasons to prevent people like hiding in the back alley or whatever. Why can't they be lowered to just above person height? Um, to limit the light spread and then put a shield on them because it's pretty clear based on where they are that they're shining into the neighboring property. And obviously, there's this very tall floodlight in the parking area. Um, that must be reduced in height to reduce the spread. And add of the light shining right into a residential window. Um, once the lights have been modified, then field measurements need to be taken of the lumen spread. Because we can't just rely on their estimates, right? So and it's clear that you could do that. Um, there's trash and debris shown in the photographs of the alleyways. They need to be maintained free of debris. Um, the photo of the parking area shows the dumpster out in the open. Uh, it must be stored in an enclosure. The floor plan shows the dumpster located in what's labeled as a trash room. That also contains some kind of unlabeled equipment that looks like probably air conditioning equipment. And the dumpster somehow has to clear it in order to be stored there. I'd like to see a photo showing the dumpster in place. And information about frequency and hours of trash brick pickup. I'm questioning whether you can really get, dumpsters are heavy, right? Um, and, uh, the usually the truck that comes pulls them from the long side, not the side. Or there's some sort of a forklift that inserts underneath the dumpster when it's facing front. Which is why, you know, the long side faces out, which is why we always see those dumpster enclosures opening that way. Um, and so how can you actually open the lid of the dumpster if it's stored on it sideways inside? There's no way you could fit that dumpster in there, rolling it straight in. So I I'm skeptical of whether that's really used to house the dumpster. Um, also, we, there was a question raised by the community board. Um, at the last hearing about flooding and we didn't see how that was addressed. And, um. A detailed plan of the, um. Americans with Disability Act clearances between the red box rentals was shown. However, no dimension was provided between the edge of the ramp and the box. Um, and it looks to me that a wheelchair is being asked to rotate on the ramp itself. Which if you've ever been in a wheelchair, that is not an easy thing to do. Um, or driven a wheelchair, I mean, pushed one. It's not an easy thing to do. Uh, it's being asked to rotate on the ramp itself and climb greater than one in twelve to access the box. It's just actually the the little side cuts of the ramp. And in order for a wheelchair user to get to the box, which is renting videos. Um, that it has to go up to side of the ramp. It's much steeper than what a wheelchair, unless you're really adept, can handle. And a pusher of a wheelchair also is now dealing with going up a very steep incline. Um, and I just asked, why can't the boxes be relocated to the other side of the column? In which case there would be room for the wheelchair to clear the column. And you just walk a little bit further to get to the boxes. So I didn't really understand that. So I asked then for comments from Commissioner Shonda.
Unmute, unmute, Commissioner.
Unmute yourself.
Sorry, sorry about that. Um, yes, I had raised a question regarding the clearance for ADA access along the red box. Um, yeah, I, now that I'm looking at the photo, I don't know what is to the left of the red box. Uh, and, oh, where. Well, there is a column, but the entrance is, so if I'm, if I'm taking, uh, if I'm coming from the ADA parking space. I will go as far left to drop off whatever I need to do in that red box. And then I will make a right turn, um, to be able to get into the store entrance, which is to the right. So, yes, uh, I think that circulation point is happening where the incline is. So that doesn't give enough space for the, uh, person on wheelchair to navigate not only the incline. But also be able to turn left to drop off something on the red box. And also, uh, from there, uh, make a right to enter the store. Um, so I agree that that red box should be, uh, I think can be moved more to the left, closer to the column. And giving enough clearance for the person on wheelchair to maneuver. Uh, not on the incline, but on a flat surface. Um, so, so I agree on that one. With regards to some of the other documents that's been submitted, um, so far, based on the photos, uh, the landscaping looks sparse. Uh, especially along the rear lot line. Along ninety-fourth street. And, uh, the applicant stated that, uh, work, uh, work permit was, uh, uh, submitted. Um, and it's so, and Walgreen is waiting for a contract. I'm assuming that is for the landscaping. Um, and if it is so, uh, did, does it include the landscaping work? Um, along on ninety-fourth street. Uh, and the landscaping plan needs to provide more specific information about the kind of planting along the rear lot line. And as you mentioned, it is not clear. Um, I I didn't find it, uh, very, uh, much clarity in the lumen analysis. Excuse me, not clear if the existing lumen count and the reduction is, um, is being, um. Uh, is as a result of the shield that they have posted. So it's not very clear. And so I, and I do agree that the post is too high. Um, it can be brought down. Um, and there was some violation. Um, and I don't know if those violations have been paid. That's all.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I agree with you about the continuous use and it would simply be solved by just taking screenshots of the Google Street photos. Um, the signage, they broke the signage up by frontage, but it seems like all of it is illuminated. So doesn't that, um, overshoot the maximum fifty square feet per frontage of illumination? Because it seems like on ninety-fourth street, there's ninety-three square feet total and on Astoria Boulevard, it's ninety-two point two one square feet. Mm-hmm. And then as for the, um, the contract that the architect, I mean, the, um, application to get the permit. I believe it's to plant the street trees, but not necessarily for the rest of the landscaping.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Sheta, unmute yourself, please.
Thank you, Chair. I I agree with all what's been said. Uh, in addition to that, uh, I would like to like either get a, a letter from the engineer. Or a, a statement in the statement of facts describing how the runoff. From the site is handled, how it's drained, how it's diverted away from the property lines for the neighbors. So that would help addressing the concerns regarding the flood.
So I I think actually, in addition to that, um, showing on the drawings how it's diverted. I mean, there should be some sort of a slope and range and showing drawings.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Shabeta?
I have nothing further to add. I agree with the board members and everything that was stated.
Okay. Okay. Tony?
Next item is fourteen fifty-eight thirteen A for Winman Place, Winman Place Staten Island.
Hey, um, plans were amended to eliminate reliance on section seventy-seven eleven, which is not applicable in this case. About, um, an existing zoning lot with a district boundary line. Um, the proposed building is now built up to the widening line instead of forward of it, so that was a change. Um, which allows for an eighteen-foot front yard measured from the sidewalk line rather than the curb. Um, although, um, the sidewalk is only five foot wide here. Um, from Silverton, there is a ten-foot setback from the sidewalk line, but from church, there's only a five-foot setback. Um, I, I wonder whether measuring the front yard from the curb line. Um. In a, is is permitted when you have, when you're basically in the bed of a map street, when the curb line is in the map street. So, uh, I'm, I'm, I say this because I'm not really comfortable with measuring from the property line like this. That's in the bed of the street. Um, it feels like a front yard waiver on church. Um, and this plus the area ways, and they keep insisting on having these area ways. Which reduce the effective planting sidewalk experience and so on. So that plus the area ways eliminates the possibility of street trees on church. Because of the sidewalk, it's only five feet wide and they're not showing any significant planting in their, on their own property. So, um, something's got to give. It's, I think it's, it's still very too, it's really aggressive on church. And church is a really narrow street, so it kind of can't handle this aggressive wall that doesn't have. Um, any vegetation on it. I mean, they're talking about bushes that grow between the area ways. So I think they should eliminate the area ways or give us another five feet on the, um. On the clearance for the building. So pull the building back another five feet, so it's like Silverton. Or, or that's my preference, frankly. I think that's what should be done. It should be treated the same way. Um, I also had asked, we had asked about sidewalk continuity on this, on the subject side of Silverton and church. Um, where we learned there's no sidewalks. Um, which I just have to say is representative of the chaos of the street network development on Staten Island. Where there's no sidewalks there, so you're forced to walk in traffic. Um, on the Silverton side, you can cross the street and there's sidewalks on the other side. But on church, you you're playing in traffic very literally. So on the as of right, which is one reason why this skimpiness on the church sidewalk situation, I think, is even less acceptable. On the as of right, um, that most resembles the proposed, so they provided several versions of an as of right. Um, I don't really understand why the one that's most similar to the proposed. Why that building doesn't extend to the rear yard equivalent line the way the proposed does. The claim is that, um, that solution leaves six thousand eight hundred thirty-seven square feet of floor area unused. But it seems instead to be underdeveloped compared to the proposed, so I I actually don't understand that and they don't explain it. There's no note on the drawing that says we have to pull back much further because of something. Um, and we are still waiting for D O T sign off, to my knowledge.
I think in a side apartment also.
Still, man. Okay, Commissioner Shonda?
Okay. So, um, I thought the as of right analysis, uh, alternatives that were provided were very helpful. In the way they progress with the four different alternatives and, um, the outcomes of that. Um, what my question was. I actually was less concerned about Church Street. I was more concerned about Silverton and Wyman and more so Silverton. Partly because the existing street that is there, um, and the, and those buildings that are built up to the lot line. They, while there might be a sidewalk, but it's definitely is not possible, um, to use that sidewalk because of the way the vehicles are parked. Uh, they are almost, they're like the parking pads, so there is no sidewalk. This, uh, the proposed project is providing, um, uh, the sidewalk that will pick up from nowhere to somewhere. So which is a good plus and hopefully, uh, in some future, uh, the sidewalk would be added, um, further, uh, to the south. Of, uh, Silverton, uh, terrace. With regards to the church street, there isn't any sidewalk on either side of the, sorry, church lane. There isn't any sidewalk on either side. It's a grassy pasture on both.
There isn't any sidewalk on either side. It's a grassy pasture on both sides of church lane. And um and I and I I think I, unlike the other street frontages, this is more like a narrow street and Silverton is the major street. So the treatment of the Silverton and church lane, I kind of see somewhat differently. And um, while I agree the area way, um, and does add to the does add to more of aggressiveness along the sidewalk, I I think five-foot sidewalk on um along church lane is fine, provided that there isn't an area way and it's just green along the rest of uh the property line. I think that would reduce the aggressiveness of feeling that one gets when one sees the area way with the um uh ne- right next to a five-foot wide sidewalk. Um, because the other area ways have, uh, they have a green buffer in front of it. So I think that's why it kind of minimizes it. I think here it feels more aggressive because the area way is right next to the sidewalk. So if I think the area way is, I feel, if the area way is removed and it's just screened over, then that five-foot sidewalk that is there along church would be fine. Um, I I, given the content that is there.
Right.
Um, I was satisfied with the as of right analysis and it was helpful in understanding the loss in the floor area. Um, and um, so I really did not have any issue with the rest of the proposed plan.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Attley Brown?
I'm satisfied with the proposed and I have no questions.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I I believe the um, like the previous commissioners mentioned, I believe the as of right analysis was very helpful for me. And uh, m- my concern actually was the um alignment of the street wall along um Silverton and church. If you look at the buildings to the south, with um, they have like a driveway in front, both sides on Silverton and church. And if you look at the proposed, the two street walls are kind of like misaligned. I'm I'm not sure if there is any way to reconfigure the proposed to not make him aligned exactly, but to like reduce the difference between, I see right now the reference is kind of probably five to seven feet. So I was wondering if there is any way to make that seven feet, even two feet or three feet, that would like be more helpful from the planning uh perspective. So I'm I'm willing to hear from the applicant um as why this is not achievable.
So, uh, question, just to understand that. So I I need to pull up the drawing quickly, but um, so you're saying that on, for example, Silverton, where it's got those little houses that have parking pads in front? And there, you're saying, why can't it align with those frontages?
Yes, why can't we make the two street walls on Silverton and church lane align? I I understand that making them exactly aligned could be difficult. But that right now, I see the difference is kind of, like I said, it's five to seven feet, based on the scale of the drawing. If if this five to seven feet could be made like two or three feet, that would make the two street lines more or less aligned. So I believe this is much better from what we're looking at right now, from planning perspective.
So so you're you're saying to increase the distance between this, the curb and the street wall on Silverton? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, like pull pull the building back from both sides and probably uh, go more south with the two, with the two legs. Right now, the building is kind of like an inverted C. So i- if if it's possible to like pull the two legs down, even increase their width little bit in the courtyard, the forty-five, and change courtyard, and instead pull the building bags from the uh property lines. So that would make the two street walls like more or less aligned. It is this possible?
So this
The zoning parameters.
So I see Commissioner Shonda's hand up, but I'm going to throw in quickly, there are courtyard regulations. And um, you're not allowed to have courtyards less than a certain uh dimension and proportion. And I think when you, if you slip the legs closer together, you're not meeting courtyard regulations. Um, that's my first guess. Um, and Commissioner Shonda, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I I think this almost would bring it back to the as of right alternative one from what Commissioner Sheta is saying. And uh, I think what is before us, and we need to be careful, to what extent do we do the planning of the site? I mean, what is before us is a de-mapping of the building onto the bed of street. Uh, and the building is already not being built on the street bed. They can build as of right within the street bed. I think our concern is the street bed. So, so I need, I I think we need to be a little bit careful as to how the design of the building has to align with the neighborhood. Honestly speaking, I would say what is there now, it's pretty hideous. What they're proposing with so much of green and no um vehicular parking in front is a much, much, my personal opinion, I'm not saying that's what everybody should agree on, is it would be a a welcoming break from this uh urban streetscape that exists. But with that said, I think our focus should be just what's um in the street bed. And this building that is being proposed is within the street bed. Not within the street, but it's outside the street bed.
Except that um, what what is being proposed requires a waiver from Watson. And and when I talk about the church street side, I'm asking whether you're allowed to measure from the curb if that's in the bed of a map street. So that's what I, I don't really understand what church street is um, and whether they're allowed to not have the full ten-foot setback the way they have on Silverton.
I vaguely seem to remember we have done that in a, this was a case in uh Queens, a warehouse, where it was built right up to um I mean, it it was built up to the lot line, which uh, and it was not setting back because the because the setback was, its property line extended beyond uh into the into the street bed. And the way it would have met the lot, all the setback requirements if one measured it from there. So they were allowed to build right up to the lot line without requiring a setback. That's what I vaguely seem to remember. This was one of the earlier cases when I just got joined the board.
No, no, so they're required on Wyman to set back ten feet from the widening line. That's the actual rule, right? They're only set back one foot from the widening line. So in order to be allowed to build what they're proposing, we need to waive their setback. So, we just finished. So, because on Wyman, it's effectively looking like a ten-foot setback from the curb, which feels like the proper kind of setback, which it wasn't before. Before, they were very far forward of the widening line, right? So, so that was a discussion and I'm, and I personally am satisfied with how far they've now set back from Wyman, because it looks like they're complying with the zoning as to Wyman's own curb. But I'm asking about church street and where they're not doing that. They're not simulating sort of the ten-foot setback from the curb. Instead, and I don't know whether that's allowed without a waiver from us. They haven't asked for a waiver from church. Um, and and so I'm not even sure it's allowed, right? But I agree that with respect to Silverton, it's a compliant application. Right? So Silverton, they're complying with ten feet setback from, but Silverton's a lot clearer. The property line is not in the bed of the street. Right? But I, yeah, I know what you mean. And I agree, normally, we're looking at as of right, but we're also, sometimes we look at neighborhood character. It's part of our, it's part of what we do when we're looking at these waivers. So, um, anyway. Okay, any other comments?
Commissioner Sheta?
So I I do agree with uh what Commissioner Shonda stated about what is currently there and what they're proposing, and how this would be a much better project than what we have there currently. I thought that one of our uh, I thought that one of our bigger issues was regard to greenery. And I think the five feet on church of planting, I I was satisfied with that. Uh, I don't know if they need another waiver. That's a really good question, and I I don't have the answer to that. But um, those are, that's, those are all my comments.
Sorry, can you say again, what were you satisfied with on church?
The planting. They have five feet of planting on church right after the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, and I believe that was in response to our request for more greenery.
Um, except what we talked about is most of the greenery is in area ways. I don't know if you could see that. An area way, you know, is this sunken access to the cellar, basically. Um, to give light to a cellar window. So there isn't any possibility to plant actual greenery there, right? So that's why we said, so Commissioner Shonda and I both agreed you should take out the area ways so that you can actually have street trees, even though they're not technically street trees, they're pro- they're privately owned trees.
I understand.
Okay, Commissioner Shonda, you have your hand up?
I actually, one of the things that I thought was very helpful in the as of right analysis, where um the applicant broke it down by, um, and I'm trying to look at the plans. Uh, in terms of what was the minimum required um green space, I I cannot locate the plan, but I think there was some analysis which showed what is the uh, what is the amount of um oh, uh, front yard or open area that is required and how much is being provided. And I think in each one of those scenarios, especially in the proposed one, it is exceeding all the requirements. And um, so that way, I did not have an issue in terms of the amount of, and they did not crown come the area way in that analysis. I'm sorry, I'm talking about the proposed. In the proposed, the the applicant showed the amount of actual greening without the area way far exceeded than uh than that is required. And I was satisfied with that and I, it was helpful. I think the reason you, uh, Madam Chair, you and I reacting to the area way is because as one walks along the five-foot sidewalk, you have this kind of like this gash right next to you below it, and the house is right next to it. So I think there's a little bit of a sense of tightness around you and not that openness that you had. And I think that's why you and I are reacting to it. But in terms of the open space and the actual greening or green open space that they're proposing, it is, it meets all the zoning requirements. I'm totally satisfied. It's just that sense of if there's a better way to treat the area way and to make it feel um uh, a much more of a comfortable space to walk. With that said, I think it's three little area ways, so maybe there are ways they can a- address it.
I think it's simple to just take them out, because there isn't a nice way to make a pit that's uh seven feet deep. That's how area ways work, right? So, and prevents planting from extending because the tree pits or the plant pits are limited between the area ways. So you're limiting the chance of having real greenery there. It ends up being some low bushes that aren't much. So, anyway. Okay. I think we can move on. Any other last minute comments? Okay.
Okay, so that concludes the public review session for the ten AM session. So now we will commence with the public hearing.
Okay, and then, um, Tony, with respect to the public hearing, can we go through the um deferred decision items first?
Yeah, but I'm gonna, oh, you you want to, you don't want to repeat the adjournments?
Yeah, you can re- repeat the adjournments, but when you call the cases, go to the deferred decision items. Yeah, I have them.
Okay, so this is the public hearing for June first, twenty twenty, at ten AM session. So the following cases have been adjourned. Eight twenty-five eighty-six BZ seventeen oh three Bronx Dale Avenue, the Bronx. Twenty nineteen sixteen BZ two fifty oh one Northern Boulevard, Queens. Twenty nineteen twenty-seven BZ four five thirty-three Eighteenth Avenue, Brooklyn. Twenty nineteen two oh three BZ one forty-four dash forty-three Farmers Boulevard, Queens. So now we'll commence with the decisions. So the deferred decisions are twenty eighteen one forty-five BZ two fifty-one seventy-three Jericho Turnpike.
Yeah, and so, um, so I'm hoping that the um applicants were listening to that review session. If um the project managers could notify their applicants um to dial in on on these cases, um, because they made so, um, to let them know. Okay. And we may have to second call these because they might not have had enough time to um to be alerted that they needed to dial in. But anyway, again, we're, this is two eighteen, case number two eighteen, um, twenty eighteen, sorry, one forty-five BZ two fifty-one dash seventy-three Jericho Turnpike. Uh, Ackerman is the applicant.
Right, San Jac.
Yeah.
I just texted him.
Maybe.
Do we have a phone number? Yeah, I have it.
I think maybe um Commissioner Attley Brown or is her, I mean, Commissioner Shonda has her hand up. Do you want? Go ahead. Yeah, Commissioner Shonda, you're speaking, but you're muted.
Uh, maybe because these were decision items and maybe the applicants were not aware they would have to be present. Would it make sense if we go to the continued item and have the applicants called on by our project managers? And we can do this in call after the continued item?
I think that's what we're going to have to do. Daryl has his hand up also.
Um, I just spoke to Frank. He's having difficulties logging in.
Oh, I see, okay.
He said, if you could give him a one, a minute, he's trying to do it now.
Oh, he's actually trying. So let's give him a minute. Thank you, Daryl. Mr. Ruffin.
Yeah, he's trying to call in.
Okay.
All right, so uh, the next one is you, oh, do you want?
No, no, we're gonna give him, he's trying. He's, so let's give him a chance. And then we can go to the continues after. And if everybody, please um let their applicants know on the deferred decisions um, to be ready to dial in after we do the continuations.
What do you want to do?
Yeah. Okay, Daryl, could you let um Mr. San Jac know that we're going to move to the continues? And then come back to him, okay? Okay, let's try the continues then.
All right, so let's go back, okay. So, item number twelve, continued hearing item sixty-seven ninety-six BZ two ten East Eighty-Sixth Street, Manhattan. Oh, I don't have Lisa's number, yikes.
Same issue. This is also Ackerman.
No, but this is Lisa Orantia. This is not Frank.
Okay.
Just to email her.
Oh, she's here.
She's there? Okay.
Okay. Turn off your YouTube video, please, Ms. Orantia.
Sorry about that.
Okay, state your name, please.
Lisa Orantia Ackerman LLP.
All right, let me sway you in, Lisa. Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to? Raise your right hand. Do you affirm to, to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
So I, I listened to the review session comments. Um, the building was last used as a theater until May twenty nineteen, when the former tenant was evicted. And, um, the prior statement submission to the BSA, I believe it included a copy of the marshal's notice, the marshal's order evicting the prior tenant. Um, there has been no two-year discontinuance of the non-conforming use under fifty-two sixty-one. And the board's rules for filing uh, concern the timely filing require proof of continuous use since expiration, a term, and the prejudice that would result without a waiver. That's rule one dash oh-seven point three. Um, concerns timely filing. And here the application was timely filed um, on July twenty-nine twenty sixteen, prior to the December seventeen twenty sixteen expiration.
So, but I have a question about that. So it was filed in July of twenty sixteen. But, um, a dismissal warning letter was sent in November of twenty seventeen, so a, a year and a half later. So if you, um, play by the rules so strictly, but you sit on your rights, basically, and do nothing, then, and it seems unreasonable that you, um, sort of stand on ceremony. So, and anyway, it seems to me that you should be able to easily prove um, continuous use just by Google Street View of the marquees.
But we would be providing continuous use under what requirement specifically?
Um, the board has, for one, the prerogative to ask for whatever, um, it need, seems necessary. And in this case, I would have to say that the, the rules are not intended for you to file and then do nothing. So for a year and a half, there was no response to our state, our notice of comments.
There was someone else who was handling this case, not Ackerman.
Your case, but nonetheless, right? So it's effectively as if, um, it was filed a year late, a year and a half late.
Um, okay.
But again, it's easy enough to, to prove this, right?
Yeah, well, I'll go back and look at the record and see what we have, um, to provide that information to the board. Um, as to the prejudice that would result if the board is also asking for that, that's just, it's gonna be the same reasons that were articulated in nineteen ninety-six. This has been a theater use since the nine, since nineteen thirty. Um, uh, so the applicant is merely wishing to continue that use.
Okay, well, but you can get into it more. Commissioner Atlee Brown, please unmute yourself.
Yes, it's, it's actually pretty simple to discuss the hardship. I mean, what we really want you to do is just complete the record for us. It's, it's not rocket science. It's basically that, you know, you've got a use that has been installed in this building for decades and it would be a hardship for the property owner to have to reconfigure the space. It's, it's very simple.
Yeah, and you know, and if you think about the complexity of a theater, that even demolition costs are enormous because you've got raked seating, you've got stages, screens, all of that stuff. The demolition costs are much bigger than if it were a drugstore, where it's basically a vanilla box, you take the shelves out, and now you have a vanilla box again. So.
And, um, a question about the continuous use. You said you had a marshal's, um, order to vacate? And I don't see it. So if you could just direct me to the month that you actually submitted that, that would be helpful.
Okay, I think that was under the, um, prior, um, applicant's representative, but I should be able to get a copy of that.
Okay. Commissioner Shonda, you have your hand up? Unmute yourself.
I, I was just, um, um, following up on the marshal's order. Um, I did go through the files and I could not find it even with the previous submission. So maybe it's there in the documents, but somehow they didn't get transferred to us.
Hmm. I know, I've seen it, but I, I don't know why it's not in there. I apologize.
Well, it might also be, you know, buried in something else. Um, and you don't realize it. It is a cover letter and attached, please find, right? And so we don't see it separately until you scan.
That's possible.
Um, which happily, that's our, the new way that we're going to be reviewing materials where each thing has a title. It's much easier to find everything, so. Okay. All right, any other, anything else you wanted to add, um, Miss Orantia?
No, thank you.
Okay, any comments from commissioners or staff, anybody? If you would like to speak, unmute yourself and speak. Okay. All right then, so, um, how much time do you need to establish the continuous use? I don't think it's gonna take you that long.
Um, I'll, I'd like to have two weeks, please.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much for dialing in. Um, now I'm going to ask if there are any comments from the public on this.
It's a public hearing on sixty-seven ninety-six BZ two-ten East Eighty-Sixth Street, Manhattan.
Okay, two-ten East Eighty-Sixth Street is what we're hearing. Please call in if you're a member of the public, sixty-seven dash ninety-six BZ. I meant to set my stopwatch on the thirty seconds of time delay. Okay, I think people have had a chance to call in. All right, we can move on to the next.
Okay, item number thirteen forty-two ninety-seven BZ ninety-three dash twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Law offices of Marvin Mitsner.
Yeah.
Here we go, here he is.
Is there? Okay.
He's connecting to audio. You can change the screen, Kirk, back to visual. Law offices of Marvin Mitsner. Please turn off your YouTube video. Here we go, here he is. Is that, okay. Marvin, please turn off your YouTube video.
I just did, thank you.
Okay, please state your name.
Marvin Mitsner.
Okay, I'm gonna have to swear you in. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, proceed.
Okay, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I listened to the comments during the executive session and I'd like to address them in, in the order they were, they were mentioned. Uh, the first comment was that the plans were not signed and sealed. Uh, the plans for the BSA application are signed and sealed. We, we submitted some additional plans, um, which were plans that were submitted to the Department of Parks and Recreation in connection with the planting of the street trees. And those plans are not signed and sealed, um, because they haven't been formally filed as yet, but will be. Um, but all the plans for the BSA action have been signed and sealed. There was a comment about the continuing use. And based upon what I've heard of the exec session, we have, we have secured the Google Street Maps and will be submitting that to the board to establish continuing use. The, um,
Oh, sorry, um, Mr. Mitsner, it's not the street maps, it's the street views, right?
Excuse me, street view.
Right, right, okay.
Correct, but it will show the existence of the Walgreens.
Right, you just wanna see the sign on the outside of the building and it's obviously active because, say, there are cars in the parking lot.
That's correct.
Okay.
Um, the, um, there's also a question raised about what is before the board, um, in, in terms of the continuing variance, since the primary use of the premises is now conforming pursuant to the zoning change to a C-one-three overlay district. Um, what remains is the parking requirement of fourteen cars, which was a, a subject of the prior variance.
Wait, sorry, what is the, what is the park? Why isn't that an as of right? Number, I thought you're providing what's required by zoning for the use.
No, the fourteen cars is, is, is the reduction in number of parking that was granted in the original variance for this facility.
What?
Well, fourteen cars was the number that was allowed under the prior variance. The, the zoning was changed to a C-one-three zone, overlay district. And the calculation of parking for this facility under that district is larger than fourteen cars.
Are you sure? It, the, the original variance was to permit in an R-four, a one-story retail drugstore with accessory parking. Right?
That's true.
So there wasn't a parking requirement, so the variance permitted the use and determined, however, it determined that the parking was adequate.
Right.
Right? I'm not, I didn't see on the zoning calculation sheet that was provided any indication that the number of spaces was not what's permitted as of right. I need to get to the drawings again. That's why I was guessing that what you had was a lot coverage and a side yard problem. But you didn't explain it in your submission, so I'm not sure that you're right. Does anybody have a chance to get to the application here?
This is on, you're talking about sheet A.
I'm, I'm talking about, yeah, where there's a cat, I'm, I'm trying to get there, but, um, where there's a, a chart that goes through, I guess this is the May thirteenth submission? Astoria Boulevard, I don't know which is the most, which is set of plans. Yeah, so it's the May thirteenth submission. And I believe there's a zoning calculation chart somewhere.
It's eight three hundred is the zoning.
Right? And it says number of parking spaces required, fourteen. Fourteen complies, okay. And the only thing that says non-conforming, and it says existing non-conforming, so then I don't actually know what to think about it, is that an existing building? Um, it's, the only things that are mentioned are lot coverage and side yard as being existing non-complying, non-conforming.
Yeah, it's, I, I believe, and I'll discuss that with the architect, but I believe what he meant was that it, this is a non-compliance which was included in the original plans that were approved by the board. Because the plans that were approved under an R-four had no requirements for commercial, commercial use. But the plans did show this condition, the condition both on lot coverage and on the side yard.
Okay, so let's go back to the parking. You're making a statement that the parking doesn't comply with current zoning. You need to verify that because that's not what it says on the architect's chart. The architect's chart says fourteen spaces, fourteen spaces.
Understood. We'll, we'll, we'll clarify that, certainly.
Okay, and then, um, you know, I don't know enough about the history of this site. If the building was built prior to the, uh, sixty-one zoning or prior to a change that didn't have side yard or lot coverage restrictions, then, um, then you wouldn't even, then you would have been an actual non-conforming, legal non-conforming condition. So you need to clarify that, and we asked you to do that last time. You need to write it down.
Understood. So I'll, we'll clarify that also. I, 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 I believe the answer was that's what the plans at the board approved, showed. But we'll clarify its, its legal status.
Okay. Go ahead.
Now, you, you also mentioned the, uh, the landscaping.
Yes.
So, uh, we will take a look at the landscaping. I know that in the, particularly the landscaping that's shown along ninety-fourth street or at ninety-fourth street. Um, and, and give you greater detail on, on improving that landscaping or increasing the landscaping at the application.
So, to be more specific, it's the shared lot line with the adjoining property. Uh, and Commissioner Shonda has her hand up. Go ahead.
Sorry, I actually had the raise, I had raised hand, uh, with regards to the floor area and the parking calculation, so.
Okay.
Uh, but with regards to the landscaping, my question was, um, the letter that was submitted, um, the cover letter states, um, that, um, that there is, um, that you have a per, a work for a permit. Um, and I wasn't sure whether the work for the permit was for landscaping or not, and, um, and that.
The, 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 the reference to the work permit is a permit from the Department of Parks and Recreation uh, for the street trees, which requires a permit. The interior landscaping doesn't require a permit.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so to go back to the landscaping question, what we're talking about is the landscaping that shows at the moment um, two existing Arbor Vidae and three existing Juniper that look pretty sad and no planting along the rest of it. So all that needs to be filled in with dense planting. So dense.
For, for ninety-fourth street, we will improve and, and indicate additional plantings.
Okay, but again, we're talking about the shared property line. It's not the frontage on ninety-fourth street, it's the shared.
Yeah, property line on ninety-fourth street.
Okay, got it, okay.
Um, then, uh, there's also a mention about the flood, the lighting around the, uh, the property.
Yes.
And, uh, let's discuss that. The, we have, uh, two tall lighting elements um, that's shown on sheet PH one hundred. Which shows the downlights in the parking lot that illuminate the parking lot. And a second, uh, tall lighting that is at the perimeter of the property that is, that shines away from the neighbors, was nearby residential building, also onto the parking lot. Uh, with respect to that one, we will, as I, I think I, we mentioned in the submission and is mentioned on the, on the drawing, we're gonna modify that uh, to make certain it's directed away from the residential building and, and place shields behind it if necessary.
So, just to clarify on that, these poles are really high. Our experience with high poles is unless the shielding is about six feet long, you can't restrict light from spreading onto the residence. That's why we say lower the height of the poles. Like, why do they need, I understand it's expensive to do it, but there's no excuse for lighting a residential property that's adjacent. So that's why we're saying lower the height of the poles. Um, if you're going to put shielding on, I'd be really impressed what kind of shielding that is. It's actually preventing it from, uh, spilling all the way to the neighbors.
Well, we, we will have a lighting engineer examine it, offer solutions, but I will tell you that we've never received any complaint from the neighbor at all about the lighting.
So you know, this is the thing about neighbors who live in the districts where you're imposed upon by. So you know, this is the thing about neighbors who live in the districts where you're imposed upon by uses, right? Neighbors give up, like they they sort of give up their rights in a lot of ways, they just think Oh, well, you know, I live next to a gas station or I live next to him, you know, a drive in something or other, and that's just the way it is, you know, I don't have the same rights as people who live in bucolic little residential neighborhoods. So we don't look to whether the neighbor complained about having light shining in their windows, we know Light shining in their windows unless you give us proof that it's not, and the proof has to be metering. But understand that we're skeptical if you tell us that it's zero. Where there's this gigantic pole and the light is shining from this gigantic pole, we need to see the shielding. And and how it's preventing the light from spreading that far. Okay, um, and actually I see no reason for the The poles to be that tall, that goes also for that alley light, like why does that alley light have to be Up there like that?
Which alley would?
No, I'm sorry, I'm mixing that up with another one, okay, sorry.
As I mentioned, we'll have somebody, an engineer, take a look at that, but I I don't think in this community board and with this community, anybody ignored a condition which was that disruptive To a to a neighbor's residence. Um and nobody mentioned this either at the community board or in our discussions with the area.
There is actually, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sheta has his hands up, but the um There are, there's a floodlight on the back wall that faces the skinny alley that looks like is about three feet wide. Um so my first question is, why do you need a floodlight in an alley that's three feet wide? And the second is, it doesn't need to be that high, that's a floodlight that's mounted to the wall, it's not on a post. It would not be expensive to lower it, it should be lowered, so it's the height of a person. You know, so say seven feet off the ground, so you don't hit your head. Um so that it's not shining into the neighbor, and I'm going to recognize Commissioner Sheta, you you um Alright, you, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, I I just want to say that you don't, you don't need to get a complaint from the neighbor To realize that they are getting hit by these At like extremely tall light poles. And you know what, I would even say you don't need to consult A lighting engineer to realize that this is the case. There is a excessive lumen shed on the adjacent property. That one of the light pools on drawing PH one hundred. The one in the middle, it's as tall as the building, I believe. So it's not expensive to fix this. It's it's not expensive to shorten this Light pole, it might be expensive if you want to make it taller because you have to Handle like a probably heavier footing. But the footing is there, the footing is capable of handling That extra tall light pole, so if you want to shorten that pole. It's it's gonna be like much easier to do it than make it taller.
Yeah.
Got it? It's 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 as simple as that, I I just want to give you the prescription for this, it's It's a cut job and then weld the plate to the lower portion. Cut a piece and then weld the remaining piece To that plate, as simple as that, it's a welding job, it could be done in half a day. And and you don't need like to Con consume like three hearings to discuss this.
Yes.
If you are here.
And and I I agree with that, and when you look at the height of this pole. The whole concept of it is there, you're using this huge light to to light the entire parking lot. And um maybe that's really not the right way to go, maybe if you need additional lighting, you add another light source That's attached to the building itself or something like that, but what you're doing is Every day shining light at night into there, I count Four windows or maybe even five because it's double, five residential windows into which this light is definitely shining.
Yeah, the the consultation to the lighting engineer should be this. If we cut this light pool like five feet shorter. Do you think we're gonna need extra lighting? It shouldn't be, do we need to shorting this light pool because it's not gonna fly here.
Right, I I I second that, okay. Let's move on and some, you need to mute, someone needs to mute, there's a lot of background noise. Um Commissioner Shonda?
Yeah, I want to go back to the parking, um so based on the current zoning, which is um Uh C one three zoning this uh commercial um overlay, the The requirement for a parking uh for use group six parking requirement category B is one per four hundred square feet. So based on the car uh existing floor area, a total of thirty three spaces would be required. And what is provided and what was approved By prior board was fourteen spaces, so So I I think I understand what um Mr. Mitsner is saying is that we had a Board had approved for fourteen spaces, even though commercial use was not allowed. And they are adhering to this fourteen spaces that was approved then, though it does not comply with the underlying current regulations.
Okay, so that should be shown on the, so you're saying it's thirty four spaces when you do the math on the size of this building?
Thirty three, thirty three, it's one per four hundred, it's one per four hundred is the requirement. And I believe the floor area is thirteen thousand three hundred seventy nine, so just that comes to thirty three spaces. But that's for the architect to clarify, but I I understand why um Mr. Mitsner stated what he said with Dr. Akats to parking.
So to to clarify what the drawing should show on that chart, it should show That the required spacing in the zoning district is thirty three spaces, if that's the right number, based on this amount of floor area. And that the BSA approved the the fourteen spaces. And so a variance is continues to be required for that. Right, and ditto if that's the case for the side yard and the lot coverage, I just don't know. Okay, it needs to be very clear.
Understood, understood, we, I believe we did mention the parking in our statement, but I will clarify that issue as well as The issue on the lot coverage and the side yard.
The in in the statement, it said parking, but it didn't say why. Right, we need the calculations always to understand what the scope of the waiver is.
No, understood, we'll have the architect modify his zoning analysis to include The proper calculation of parking. Okay, there was also some Mention of the dumpster.
Yes.
And the location of the dumpster. Sheet A one oh three Shows the dumpster location. At at the uh at the lower right corner of the property.
Yeah, you try and get a dumpster in there, let's see. I want a picture of the dumpster in and out, so dumpsters are heavy. You know. And they're loaded from the front, right? When you put garbage in there, you load them from the front, when the dumpster come, the the company, the trash company comes to pick it up. They insert their sort of fork underneath it from the front. It lifts up into the trunk and empties and then it lowers. So how does that work? If that's actually as shown on the drawing, the configuration of the trash room? Where it looks like that's some kind of Mechanical equipment or maybe it's related to the conveyor belt, I actually can't figure out what that thing is, it might be air conditioning, I don't know what it is. And somehow or other the dumpster is slipping between equipment And being rotated To fit neatly back there, I don't believe it for a second, so I need photographs.
Well, we we have a photograph, but actually the dumpster is rolled out and then picked up by the truck.
Let me see, I want to see it in, out is where it's not supposed to be.
No, that's not where it's stationed, it's stationed in, but it's rolled out for pickup.
That's what you're saying, I want to see it stationed in.
Fine, we'll give you a photograph of the dumpster in location.
Okay. Because basically what we were seeing was the dumpster just hanging out in the parking lot, right?
Yeah, I think it was in in the course of being removed probably, if I had to guess.
You don't know, you're a fact witness, so you don't know the answer to this, right?
But we'll show it to you the way you would like to see it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from commissioners?
Now, the other, the other, the other thing that was mentioned was the red box and the location of the red box next to the ramp. Um as was mentioned by, I think, Commissioner Chandra is is, that can be moved left so that it's not Uh as a condition where the wheelchair would have to go up to the ramp and make that severe turn.
Yes, so it means it would move to the other side of the column.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And I mean, the the box is really visible, so, and I think it says red box on the side. So then people who are coming to either return or Take videos would know to walk a little further, Commissioner, um not, Sheta has his hand up. Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair, that the drainage issue wasn't addressed by the applicant.
Yeah.
So I would like to mention that I I scoured the file for the case. And I couldn't find a survey, a topographic survey for the um for the site, so they can provide one. And they show us where are the floor drains or whatever drains located in the parking lot. And around the building, we want to understand how the drainage works. And I would urge them to like locate the neighbors Who were like expressed concerns regarding the drainage and make sure that The drainage next to the property line where these neighbors exist Is is properly uh working.
It's never been an issue with drainage off the site to neighbors' properties, the issue has always been Drainage of the parking lot itself. And what that really has to do is probably clogging of the drain more than anything else. So that's something that Walgreens is addressing and will be and is correcting. And we've made that commitment to the community board also.
Can you get us a plan showing where are these floor drains or whatever drains located? And what are the grade elevations around them?
Yeah, we can show, we can show you a plan of the of the drainage.
With grade elevations, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Otley Brown has her hand up?
Yes, could you just show compliance with um the illuminated signage maximums per frontage?
Yes, we can, those those, you you mentioned that at the exact session, but The the signage is not all illuminated, some are and some aren't. So we will do a calculation based upon the the illuminated versus non illuminated signage and show compliance.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Mitsner?
No, I think that covers uh that covers it.
Okay, any other comments or questions from commissioners? From staff? No, okay, so then I'd like to open this up to the public. To dial in, Tony, can you read the case number, please?
This case is forty two ninety seven BZ ninety three twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, please dial in if you would like to speak on this, um we have a time delay of thirty seconds, so Um I'm timing thirty seconds, so people have a chance to dial in, and in the meantime, Mr. Mitsner, how much time do you need to respond to this?
We'll probably need about Let's see. Probably a month's time to reply.
Okay, I think that's enough?
Let's see, July.
So uh I'd recommend that with respect to the lighting, you not come back to us with more Lumen spread things, but in fact have corrected the problem, so I would say that's going to take you more than four weeks.
So you want the, you want the light poles to be lowered?
Yes, and then they're, once they're lowered and then the um The floodlights are put back on, then you get a meter reading to show that at the property lines, you're reading zero. So it's going to take a little while to get, um, well, depends on who your sources.
We're gonna, we're gonna need about twice that time.
Okay, so eight weeks then?
Yeah, let's make it end of July.
Okay.
Just to be clear, is it going to be meter readings, not analytical readings or analytical predictions?
Right.
Yes, meter readings, thank you.
Okay, so we gave plenty of time, almost two minutes for people to call in and no one has called in, so thank you, Mr. Mitsner for dialing in, appreciate it.
Pleasure, so the hearing will be adjourned to the submission date.
Um so you know, we assign the the dates and so on after the hearing because it's hard to do all this on simultaneously. But I take on into consideration how much time you need to respond. And so I look for hearing date where not less than eight weeks are given to respond. And to the extent there's room on that calendar, we'll put you there, but it might be a subsequent calendar. Because um just to let you know, because you haven't done many of these, I don't think with our Zoom video. Um we try to limit the number, oh, someone did Call, just call in, so I don't know if this is person related to this case, Marina. Is that somebody related to a subsequent case, Tony? Don't know, okay, to admit somebody named Marina, um hopefully dialing in on case number.
Forty two ninety seven BZ.
Astoria Boulevard, no, she just hung up. Okay, or did she, let's see. No, she was admitted, so um if you can hear us, um the person who's dialing in named Marina. Please state your name.
Yes, hi, this is.
Turn off your YouTube video, please, okay? Turn off your YouTube video, please. We get feedback, we can't hear you. Okay, um, tell us your name, please.
Uh hi, this is Marina Ovchinnikova from Simino Architects.
And what case are you calling in about?
Uh for Wyman.
Okay, you're not, you're in the wrong, yeah, so hold on, we're going to send you back and we'll let you in in a second. So I'm sorry, Mr. Mitsner, sorry to interrupt myself, I was explaining that um What we're trying to do is keep the number of cases in each section To um to about four or five Um cases to be heard because we don't want these video, these these Zoom hearings to go on for too long because it's hard to be on them for a long time, okay, so Just so you understand the The methods for assigning the cases, okay, thank you very much for calling in.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, so the next case is item number fourteen fifty eight thirteen A for Wyman Place Staten Island. So Jay, Jay Goldstein, please call in.
Yeah, they both called in and they're in the waiting room.
Okay.
They're coming through the waiting room, let's say.
Yeah, Jay's there, okay.
Yeah. So, which one? So when you can hear us, please state your name. Okay, so the next case is, I don't know, turn off your YouTube video, please. Turn off the YouTube video, please. Tell me who, um, the person who is last digits nine nine one, who is that?
Please identify yourself, nine nine one.
Harry Simino, hello.
Yeah, you are?
So yes, Harry Simino, architect, thank you.
Are you here for four four one in place?
Yes.
Okay.
Ha, sorry, can you spell your last name, please?
Sure, S I M I N O, Simino.
Okay, okay, thanks. Okay, and then we also had Marina, can you hear us?
Yes.
Can you say your last name, please?
Avchinnikova.
Can you spell it, please?
Yes, it's O V T C H I N N I K O V A.
Ovchinnikova, got it, all right, thank you. Go ahead, Jay, state your name.
I think we need a, I don't know if we called the case, we were trying to beat the delay, I apologize for everyone jumping in.
The case was, we, it was called, you don't need to be sworn in, it's an A case.
Okay, perfect, Jay Goldstein for the applicant, I have with me the architect's record for the project and I hope everyone's doing well. Um I listened to the review session, I think there are really Two main points on this, um so I'll start with the first one, the question with regard to How how we uh measure the front yard along a map street, so church is a map, is an unmap street rather. And we're not proposing to build.
And we're not proposing to build within it. So similar to the buildings that are directly adjacent to us, which built as of right, they measure from the lot line. They measure their front yard from the lot line. So they have eighteen-foot front yards to accommodate their parking spaces. We're proposing a ten-foot front yard, and that ten-foot front yard per zoning is measured from the lot line. Um, of the, you know, where, in this case coincides with the map street. So we're not asking for a waiver along church because we don't require one.
Wait, sorry, sorry. Church is a mapped or an unmapped street?
Unmapped.
Unmapped.
CCO for an unmapped street.
Oh, it has a CCO?
Yeah, it's marked on the plans. We mark it on our.
So I didn't see the CCO. I couldn't find what the status of that is.
Not final, it's on, if you look at B two, church lane is not final map, not adopted, CCO three oh eight eighty-five.
It, it is a CCO.
Right.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Therefore, we're, we measure our front yard from the lot line of the property, similar to what they did at the adjacent property. Or at the adjacent, uh, development site. Um, the next question, I believe, is, uh, with regard to the area ways. So, and really with a focus on church lane. So if you look at page B three, and I, I believe Vice Chair Chanda, this is the sheet you were referring to, which gave you the, the calculations for the yard, the planting. The area ways along church are not continuous area ways. We're proposing three area ways on church. The remainder of it will be planted. The planting as proposed and as designed was done with an arborist. It wasn't done by the architects of record. It was done in consultation with Thomas Kelly, who's a New York State licensed arborist, and we noted on the plans as well. Um, I believe it was his feeling or based on the design that five feet for, uh, trees, larger trees wouldn't be a viable or a great solution, given the retaining wall would be right next to it. So I think even if we get rid of those three area ways. I'm trying. The building, the building wall. Even if we get rid of those three area ways, the rest of the area, he didn't propose trees. If you look at B three, the middle diagram, there are no trees presented there either. I think it's because he felt that on that frontage, trees were not viable, given the narrowness of the front yard.
I don't agree with that, so, um, often see planting beds that are less than five feet deep. We, and we have, we have arboridae, for example, which is often put in planting beds that are four feet deep, right? Right up against buildings, right up against property lines, et cetera.
For large trees, like a cherry tree? Or is that for smaller?
An arboridae is, uh, an evergreen tree that we typically use for.
Those are the ones we use for synagogues along the fence line.
Yeah, so they're dense, they're considered dense buffers, right? Those trees grow tall. And we have had them planted in even four-foot planting beds. So you're talking about a five-foot planting bed here. The reason he's showing these small shrubs is because it's between the area ways. That's evident. And, you know, I, I, with all due respect, I want to say unless you're the arborist, I don't really want to hear conjecture.
I don't know anything about trees. I, all, the, the remaining, there are three area ways that we're discussing. It's not, there's not a full frontage along church of area ways. So the remaining portion of church, he also did not propose large trees, while he did on the other two frontages. So.
So without, without the arborist present to talk about, you're guessing, and don't forget, you're a fact witness.
I'm not giving.
I don't really want to know about your ideas of being an arborist. All of us try to be landscapers and none of us, to my knowledge.
I never try to be a landscaper. It's not within my wheelhouse.
Commissioner Shonda has her hand up.
Um, I have a question. Since there is a great change between char, uh, church lane and Silverton. Uh, the area way that is being proposed, since I don't have a section, I want to get an understanding from the architect. Will the area way that, um, that is proposed along church lane, is it at grade with church lane? Or will it be below the height of the curb of the church lane? And the reason I'm asking that question is when I'm looking at the renderings, um, on page B one, it seems the area ways that are on Wyman and, um, Silverton seem to be at grade. So that's why I'm asking that question. It's like balcony almost.
They read like balconies, right?
Yeah, so are these balconies, uh, um, that are at grade or are these like, as Chair had said, like the, or are they like pits?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Um, there's just a retaining wall that comes up six inches above grade, and then it goes down a full approximately six to eight feet down.
That's what I thought. It's a light source for.
Yeah, it's a light well to get into the lower unit, right. There's usually a, an accessory room down there, and that's the reason for it.
What you're seeing on the rendering is, is, um, on top of the retaining wall for the area way, correct?
No, that doesn't make sense. So wait a second. You ha, so I'm trying to understand this also. Thank you, Commissioner Shonda, for pointing this out. How can you have a balcony at grade and then actually light a cellar unit? Or whatever that thing is, because you're not allowed to have a unit in the cellar.
There's not, there's no balcony. Uh, as I said, it's an actual area way that goes down.
No, your rendering is showing a balcony.
No, Marina, want to jump in? Marina?
Uh, sure, the, so these are area ways. The retaining wall of the area way comes approximately six inches above, uh, grade. Uh, and then we have a railing, which is a code required protection for, um, an area where there's forty-two inch high childproof railing that, um, protects, uh, people from falling into the area way.
So then the windows that are, so the windows that are shown above grade.
Those are at the.
They're at the floor above, and all you can do is open the window and look down into the air. But you can't walk out on something.
Correct.
That's correct, yes, yes, of course. It's protection, yes.
Yeah, okay. Right, understood. So, um, well, that kind of reinforces then why you wouldn't have much in the way of landscaping on church where that whole side is obstructed by area ways.
That's, um, what I'm trying to show. It's only three area ways along church. It's not a, it's not a full wall of area.
It's a lot of area ways. If you look at the amount of frontage and the amount of area ways, it's significant. It's, I don't know how long the area ways are.
The area ways are twelve feet and twenty-three feet long in the current proposal, so it's a total of thirty-five feet.
Right.
Length of the, you know, one hundred and fifty foot length of the front yard.
Right, but what it's doing is for that whole distance there, which is mostly what I consider to be like the aggressive side of the building, you have arrow, area ways. It's not like spread out along the entire frontage. It's collected in one spot. And so you have this whole area, this whole section, that won't be, have vegetation. And so it's making, so that's why, talking about if you're only going to have a five-foot sidewalk, and then the rest of it for a very, for a long distance, third, would you say twenty-something and twelve-something?
Yeah, one of them is twelve feet and the other two are twenty-three together.
So, okay, so for thirty-five feet, minus one little spot where you've got a, a bush, um, you have nothing. So I think that the best solution in terms of the general public is to not have area ways there so that you have vegetation that comes all the way along. It, you know, there's no objection to what's going on on Silverton and, and Wyman because you have a significant setback from the street. So it gives the feeling of real greenery as opposed to this side where it's quite, I think it's very aggressive. I, I don't think it's really right.
Chair, I, I see your point, but if you walk up the block and you go to the, if you walk on that block, um, on the other side of the street, across the street, it's all, there's a bunch of row houses, it's all concrete up to the, to the line. It, it, uh, it doesn't seem terribly out of line with what's surrounding it.
So in other words, you go from worst to worst.
To better.
Yeah, we are providing, as opposed to those, we are providing a sidewalk, a five-foot sidewalk.
I just wanted to add something, um, I, so let's say, um, let's, let's step back. And let's say the church lane, um, typically houses would have a cellar or a basement. And typically they will have a window that is maybe three feet or four feet from the ceiling below. Uh, with like a little bit of a moat around it to allow for the light and air and, and that's it. I think here, reason we are reacting a little bit more to it is because, not all the commissioners granted. Um, uh, it's because it's a six-foot deep pit. Now, if the area ways to allow for light and air, why does it need to be six feet? It could be just the height of the window that you're proposing. And, uh, and contain it within that, and there are ways that's done where I think some places you have a little bit of a, um, like, um, uh, kind of a little bit like a greenhouse type of thing. You put some glass on it, um. I mean, I, I understand that they, you will have windows there. And you will end up having windows like cellar spaces and basement spaces do. And you're trying to provide some light and air that comes in through those windows. I, I get that. Um, so it's a question of, is there a way, in, uh, way I'm looking at it, um, is there a way to reduce the footprint of the area way and the depth of the area way?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we definitely can. We could reduce the depth, as you said, down to three or four feet, and we can re, reduce the width from twelve feet to five feet. There's no question. We just want to get a small amount of light. That's where we can have those trees. I'm all for trees.
Okay, all right, that's a fair compromise. Okay.
So we're gonna, so just to understand from my point of view, because I'm not an architect or an arborist, um, the area, we have three areas on church. Uh, Mr. Simino's proposing to reduce them to five feet wide instead of twelve feet each, and will reduce the depth from six feet to four feet or whatever it is.
A window depth, yes.
If that's okay with the board, we're fine with that.
That sounds good, so. Yeah, that sounds like a good compromise.
Okay.
Thank you.
So I think that's, that, now that that's resolved, just in terms of the other household, I guess, housekeeping. To Commissioner Sheta's point, uh, Madam Chair, you're correct, the, the courtyards are being driven by the design of the building and the need for, you know, the area way, the, the light near for the units that are proposed. Um, but I'd also like to point out that our proposed building is going to be approximately forty feet away, given the rear yard equivalent from the buildings next door. So it'll really be, and we'll have a sidewalk, we'll have the trees and the, the buffering. You won't see the, the difference in terms of the, the building, um, depth along, along Wyman, along Silverton, rather. Um, and additionally, those front yards are eighteen feet, so even reducing by two feet, we're only at ten. I don't believe it'll make that, you know, substantial difference, and it's an as-of-right front yard that we're proposing.
Right, you're, you're, you're responding to Commissioner Sheta's comments about aligning street wall. Okay.
And then the final question you asked, uh, Madam Chair, with regard to the ads of bright schemes. Why did we not go to the rear yard equivalent on scheme four? We do.
No, what?
So I think maybe you're, you may be mentioning scheme three where we don't go to the rear yard equivalent.
Uh, without finding it. I see in the one that's most similar, so it's a U-shaped building.
So the one that's most similar would be AR four. It's almost like a donut. The other one, AR three, which you, which is the one that looks like a C. Um, the reason it's not going to the rear yard equivalent is even in our proposed building, as you see from the proposed plans where we show the parking layout, we're cantilevered over the first floor. So even our, our first floor is also not going to be to the rear yard equivalent because it, it restricts our parking. The, the maneuverability for the parking is restricted if we went to the rear yard equivalent at the first floor. So even in the proposed, our first floor is not going to be at the rear yard equivalent line.
No, but if we go back to this one that's as-of-right and, okay, it's shaped like a C, you know, um, it, it's held back. It's, it's a hundred, let's see, it's measuring a hundred, I'm just looking at the drawing. It's measuring a hundred feet to the back of the building from the widening line. Whereas, I don't know what the measurement is of the proposed, because you're not measuring from the.
I'm gonna help you out with that, though, but it's, if you look at B three, it, the same, um, our proposal on the first floor is also set back from the rear yard equivalent because we, we need maneuverability for our parking.
But it's not, so you make a statement in your statement of facts that if you had to build as-of-right, you'd be leaving something like sixty-five hundred square feet on the table. But on this proposal that's shaped like a C, where it's a, uh, the lot coverage is sort of extra deep on the, on the, sort of the longer portion of the C that faces Wyman. Um, the C doesn't go to the rear yard equivalent line at any level. Whereas on your proposed, it goes to the widening line at, maybe that's the second floor. I'm just looking at the lot coverage, right? The lot coverage shows the building going to the widening line. So it looks like you're effectively giving up many thousands of square feet by not going to the widening line, so I don't understand, I mean, to the rear yard equivalent line. So I don't understand the statement that we have to give up sixty-five hundred square feet if this seems to be an option not taken.
I'll let Marina, who did all of these proposals, address that point.
Okay.
Well, scheme, uh, scheme three point O was, uh, a more simplified version where we didn't, uh, have the building cantilever and, uh, change as it goes up, just to show what kind of area we would get, and it does. Uh, the reason again why it is set back from the thirty-foot rear yard equivalent is for, as Jay pointed out, to allow for parking. The building does get more complex, and we did, in the scheme fo, four point O, use a more complex volume that we currently propose, but setting, um, the building front to the street widening line. And we actually have a bigger loss, uh, than if we did a straight extrusion. But it, it's just a simplified way to look at it because it's a very complex site and.
No, 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 no. So, so I understand from an architect's point of view, look, I did all these different versions of what I could build. But one of the arguments for why there's a hardship and why this has to happen is that I'm leaving, in the case of scheme three, I'm leaving sixty-one hundred square feet on the table unused. But you're not. Right? Let me just finish to my sentence.
Sure, sorry.
You didn't extend the legs of the C all the way out to the rear yard equivalent line, which you do do in your proposed. So I'm like, not, so the sixty-one hundred square feet is not a true statement. You're leaving less if you were to extend it the same way. Unless there's a reason why you can't extend it the same way, but I don't, uh, you can't say, well, we put parking under a cantilever on the proposed, and we didn't put it under, on the, on the, on this versions, on this version three, but that's just because you didn't, not because you couldn't. So my question is for an accurate statement of what you would leave on the table, scheme three should look like the proposed, right? There should always be one that looks a lot like the proposed. That way, it finishes off what's left on the table, okay? Yes.
Number four, so number four, scheme four is the one that, I, I understand your point with regard to scheme three, but number, scheme four is the as-of-right that most closely resembles our proposed. So.
No, 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 but let's just stay with, stop moving on to the other one. Let me just finish my sentence. I'm on scheme three, and I want to know why those legs don't continue all the way down to the rear yard equivalent line. Um, because if it's allowed, maybe there's something about the courtyard. Maybe it's not a legal court. F, if you extend the legs further down. Um, I don't know the answer. That's either needs to be explained or you have to lower the delta. Um, I don't know the answer. That's either needs to be explained or you have to lower the delta between what's allowed and what, uh, as of right and the proposed. Okay? Yes, Commissioner Shanda.
I, I think, um, I think the reason and that, uh, when I was reviewing it, this is how I took it, was the, in scheme three, you did not cantilever it out. Uh, because you wanted to keep it simple. I get it. But if you were to even build it at grade up to the rear yard. It would have then resulted in more floor area, would have required more parking, which you couldn't have provided, given the footprint you had. And, and that's why you went to alternate, as of right four scheme, where you're cantilevering out, you're using floor area. And because of the cantilevering, which results in a much more complex plan, you're able to provide the parking requirement. That's how I was reading the narrative and the progression from as of right one to four.
That's the way we would, that's, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, but they didn't pursue the cantilever, right? So it shows that on that one, they need 18 spaces based on the amount of floor area.
That's what I'm getting at. That in the as of right three, so basically from as of right two to as of right three, they said, well, let's see what we would get. If we were to keep the building at grade without any cantilevering. And how much floor, how much floor area we would need. And based, how many units we would get. And based on those, how many units, how much parking can we provide in the leftover space? So that's, it's a, it's a kind of a balance between the number, amount of space that they have for providing space at grade. With the, uh, with an ad grade building without any cantilever. And that took them to get as a right four. Where they're trying to maximize the floor plate by cantilevering and allowing parking.
Right. I, I, I get that. But that's, you know, that's the architect pursuing lots of different ideas. But the, the job of the, of the lawyer is to get the maximum amount of allowable floor area that complies otherwise with zoning on the site. And then say the delta between what's allowed as of right and the proposed is this, right? So none of them are doing that, right? None of them are comparing apples to apples. You always look at the proposed. And then you cut the proposed up to say, well, I can't do this part of the proposed. I need to pull back from Wyman, which is really the only controlling side, right? Wyman is the one you need to pull back. They're required 10 feet from the widening line. And then, and then you have the proposal. So, so anyway, I would like them to go back and make sure we have the right number in the, in the delta.
My, my question is though, to maybe to the architects. Um, scheme number four, which I'm not, I'm not discounting anything on scheme number three. I hear your points. Scheme number four is the scheme that most similarly represents the proposed plan.
No, it doesn't. It, because it closes the donut. So you have different, you're, you have a different courtyard situation. So the donut is driven by court regulations. And you could tell, you know, you could say to me, well, if we were to extend the legs in scheme three. To, to come to the widening line, I mean, to the rear yard equivalent line. Something about courtyard regulations tells me I can't do that, but I don't think so. Okay? Commissioner Sheta has his hand up patiently waiting. Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Chair. Um, actually, that takes us back to my point, the discussion you just mentioned about scheme number three. Uh, in case of extending these two legs all the way to the, uh, equivalent rear yard. First of all, I just, I just want to make sure that when we keep talking about cantilever, I don't think we do have a cantilever here. I believe this is just, uh, the part of the roof. And is, is extending all the way at the top floors, is extending all the way to, um, to the, uh, to the rear yard equivalent line on the proposed. But just on the lowest floor, that on the first floor level, it's not used. It's being used as driveway. So we're, we're talking about cantilever. I don't think we do have a real cantilever here. It's just.
Right. Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think anybody's disputing that.
Yeah. So I, I, if, if this is the case, I'm wondering what is, what is the reason for not doing something similar? On scheme three. And if we do, it's gonna be so close to the proposed. And, and like with the exception that part of the courtyard is now being added to the floor area. So, yes, I agree with the chair that the, the two legs could be, if they extended to the, uh, 30-feet line rear yard, that would like take us closer to the proposed scenario.
Okay.
And without cantilever.
Right. So the word cantilever, we all throw around like, you know, it's sort of, it's not a term of art. It's just a way of referring to something that's hanging over something without the matching floor below. As opposed to whether it's structurally, technically a cantilever. But I, I don't need to belabor this point anymore. I do think that they got the picture and they need to, um, make sure that decisions that are made on the proposed are the same decisions made in the as-of-right. So it's apples to apples. Okay. Uh, any other comments from commissioners or anything else you want to add, Mr. Goldstein?
I think that's it, um, on my end.
Okay. Anything the architects would like to add? No? Okay.
Marina?
How much time?
No.
We do quick, we're waiting on DOT.
No, 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 wait, slow down, Tony, please. Sorry. Okay, so we're opening this up to, um, calls from the public. So just read your, uh, read the case number, please.
Sorry about that. 5813A4 Wyman Place Staten Island. Sorry about that, Madam Chair.
So we're, okay, so we're, um, uh, requesting that any member of the public who would like to speak on this, please call in. And we're going, I'm going to time it again because I admit we have a very long delay on this. Um, so before someone can actually hear what we're saying. So in the meantime though, I'd like to ask, um, the applicant, how much time they need to respond to our questions.
Uh, Marina and Harry?
Uh, we have all these numbers we can get back to in a week.
Um. Well, let's just say, well, you know, it'll be much more like, um, four weeks. Because we don't have room on hearings before that. So, so we're going to give you four weeks to submit at minimum. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
I think that's fine anyways, because DOT still needs to respond to our submissions.
Ah, right, still waiting.
We responded to them once and we haven't heard back. And then we submitted this and we still haven't heard back.
Right. And actually, now that I remember, Tony, I think advised and jump in, Tony, that DOT is obviously working on lots of emergency situations at the moment. So, um, review.
Yeah, there was, yeah, there was some, uh, connectivity issues with some of the parties that review. There's different levels. And they're also prioritizing the COVID-19 requirements that they're have to now DOT is working on. So they apologize. Um, this is including not only your project, but other projects in this sort of vein. So.
Yeah.
I mean, a month is fine then. I don't, Tony, do you, you think that you'll hear from them before then?
I hope so. And I'll also, um, well, I guess, are you going to revive, are the plans being revised again? So we're gonna have to resubmit.
Yes, the plans are being revised to deal with the area way and, and landscaping. And, um, the, yeah.
All right. So we'll resubmit to DOT too. Uh, fire department also, do you want?
Yeah, well, fire department, I don't think, but we don't usually have fire department on GCL 35s.
All right.
Right?
I just want to make sure, cover, cover everything.
EDOT to say that it's okay to obstruct the bed of their street, right?
Yeah, it's the most important. Okay.
So, okay. And, um, because it has frontage on at least one map street. Um, uh, we don't have, really have a DEP problem. So it's not the same as BEC, GCL 36, right? Okay. So we did give the public two, more than two minutes, two and a half minutes to pick up and they haven't. So, um, I thank everyone for calling in, appreciate your participation.
We need to do a schedule with us. Or you'll do the schedule afterwards, Tony?
Yeah, so that's.
We'll let you know what, what, we'll let you know what date you're on.
So the reason that I ask how much time you need to submit is that gives us a chance to figure out on which hearing schedule you can place. But we do not do that while we're on Zoom, because it will take too long.
Okay. Thank you very much. Bye.
Okay. Um, so we're going back to decision items. So item number, oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry. Is that the end of our continueds?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I see.
Make sure.
Mr. Frank Saint-Jacques, um, already is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So 2018 145BZ 25173 Jericho Turnpike, Queens. So are we reopening or not, Madam Chair?
Um, yeah, we're gonna have to reopen.
Okay, so the motion to reopen, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Frank, uh, Saint-Jacques, uh, when you can hear us, please state your name.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, everyone. Frank Saint-Jacques, Ackerman LLP for the applicant.
So I have to sway you in now since we reopened. Raise your right, oh, are you there? Yeah, raise your right hand. Sorry, Frank. Uh, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this order to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Go ahead, Frank.
And I, I just wanted to confirm, this is 2018 145BZ?
Yes, 7, 25173 Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
Okay, um, so we had been in touch with, uh, staff with respect to some, uh, final requests for the application. We submitted a revised statement of facts and findings, as well as a revised engineer letter. Uh, based on the comments at the review session earlier, I, I understand that, uh, those items were acceptable. Um, the architect was not able to make the changes requested to the plans. Um, but is working to do so, and we should have them in hand, uh, shortly. Um, just to clarify, this was, uh, creating clarity on the plans with respect to the occupancy charts. Uh, the occupant load is, is calculated, uh, per building code section, uh, 1004, uh, table 1004 dot 1 dot 1. Using gross square footage. And then there's a, another chart on the plans, um, indicating the PCE floor area. Uh, there's some concern that those numbers would be conflated, uh, and confusing. So we've asked the applicant to, uh, further clarify what, what that occupant load chart, uh, stands for. Um, I, I think this is a relatively, uh, quick change for the architect to make. They just could not do so, um, given the, the time from Friday to this morning. Um, I expect to have them either later today or tomorrow. And we just ask if it's at all possible to, to put this matter on for the next hearing date, uh, for a decision again.
Okay, so, but you know, what's so confusing, um, is, okay, you're using zoning floor area for the PCE floor space schedule.
Correct.
Versus gross floor area. All of our PCEs are gross.
So my understanding is that there's, there's different ways to do so. Um, you can, uh, identify a net floor area as, as one way to calculate, uh, occupancy.
What's net?
So net is subtracting the footprints of all the equipment within the space. And arriving at, at a considerably reduced net number. And then I believe that's divided by 15 to get an occupancy. Another way to do that is to, uh, use a.
No, slow down, slow down. No, no, no. You're talking about occupancy. I'm not.
Okay, so I'm sorry then.
I'm talking about council needs to know when they write the resolution, how big is the PCE?
That's the zone floor area. And that's described in our statement of facts and findings. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't realize.
Please let me finish my sentence. Okay? So we often have PCEs that are in the cellar. As you know, cellars are not floor areas. So we look at the gross, okay? So we're looking at the gross floor area for the council to know how big is the PCE. And then you can have zoning floor area as well. But otherwise, you know, for instance, you can have a gigantic mechanical room that's being used for the PCE. You still have to say that the PCE is the gross floor area. Otherwise, that accessory space that's used for mechanical isn't included in your total. And DOB potentially will kick you out, right? So you must be clear that the gross floor area, which includes mechanical space on the upper floors, is the PCE space. And, um, and then arguably, the occupancy count will be the same. Because they're using gross floor area to calculate the occupancy. Because I see that the, they have, um, the first floor where they're doing the occupancy count is 3,492 square feet. Whereas the PCE floor space schedule is only 3,370 square feet. Hence the confusion. It's much easier if you just stick with the gross. And you indicate that that's the gross floor area on each floor.
Okay, I, I, so I, I mean, we've definitely calculated gross floor area for other applications that include cellar space. Um, because it's, that's what the floor area is. I, I've, we've, I've never done it this way. And another PCE application will, will change the, the materials to reflect that.
And it means that your to, it means your totals won't be accurate. Because you'll be saying the gross floor area that has a cellar is this number. And whereas a, a PCE that doesn't have a cellar is that number. So you need to be very clear what numbers you're providing. If you want to provide both sets of numbers, then be super clear. So that council can choose and clarify in the resolution what's being permitted, right? That, that's the problem.
To reflect that, that calculation.
Okay. Okay.
Again, something that can be done.
Um, yeah, okay. And, um, I want to say the statement of facts should be updated too. Because the last one that you submitted was in July of last year. And on page one, it says, and I, and I've gotten this from our deputy counsel, Chase Vine. Um, page one, it says 17,981 square foot fitness center on portions of the first and second floors. Page two, 17,242 square feet PCE on portions of the first and second floors of a new building, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of inconsistency and you may have had one thing in mind. And that's the reason we need this corrected, because even in your statement of facts, you have two different numbers. Okay?
That, that was an error that, um, thought we had corrected in, in this last submission on, on Friday. Um, that was just a holdover from, um, you know, obviously last summer. Um, we will go through the record again and, and make sure that everything is consistent as it relates to the statement of facts and the plans. And resubmit, uh, in the next, by the end of the week.
Okay, so, um, I just want to say, can you please give us a cover letter and tell us exactly what the changes are and where they're made? Okay, like on page one, we corrected this number, right? On drawing A something, we corrected the chart. Here's the bubble. That in, or the cloud that indicates the correction. And then you give us a clean set of drawings also signed and sealed. Okay? Okay, good. All right. Any other comments from commissioners? Um, uh, Mr. Vine, did you want to add anything to help? Chase? Can't hear you. You muted yourself.
I, I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you. All right then. So then I would like to make a motion to close this. Or actually, maybe I need to invite the public to speak, right? Because we opened it. So I'd like to make, uh, invite the public to call in on this application, which is the PCE. Tony, can you read the?
Sure. It's calendar number 2018 145BZ 25173 Jericho Turnpike, Queens.
Okay, so I.
Want to finish?
Yeah, so, um, I'm just timing it. So there's enough time for a time delay. And so, okay, so if you can, I, I don't want to rush you because I don't know for sure whether or not we'll be able to put this on for the next decision. But if you can get it in, get your submission in by Friday, um, then, um, you know, we'll try to put it on for the next hearing date. But I'm not sure that we're going to be able to accommodate you. It depends on that schedule.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. So having allowed 35, 37 seconds for call in and not seeing anyone call in. Um, I'd like to make a motion to close this.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
So it's closed again.
Okay. Um, I just want to ask though, because it's 12:30 and we haven't taken a break, could, do commissioners want to take a five-minute break? I know Commissioner Shonda has a problem at one, but I'll think we'll be done by then, even if we did.
No, we only have two more cases, right?
Okay, all right, so then we're gonna be calling unless I hear, um, protest. No? Okay.
Okay.
Hold on one second. No, everybody all right? Okay, I got it. Yes, okay.
Okay, I have number 16, 2019-21BZ, 2223 East 14th Street, Brooklyn. Is this Frank?
Okay, I think he's stayed on, right?
No, this is not Frank Saint-Jacques, this is, uh, this is Lobel's office.
Okay, this is 2019-21BZ, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, okay. Okay, we have Frank Noriega, and, okay, here we go. State your name when you can hear us, and please turn off your YouTube.
Good afternoon, Frank Noriega, uh, from Sheldon Lobel PC on behalf of the applicant.
So we're reopening, Madam Chair, or no?
Um, yes.
Okay, so the motion to reopen, Madam Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
So this is reopened? Let me, let me, uh, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board and to answer, to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Proceed.
Uh, well, again, Frank Noriega from Sheldon Lobel on behalf of the applicant. Um, I listened to the comments from the review session this morning, and I must start off by apologizing. I do not know how this, uh, was submitted without a cover letter. Um, I immediately forwarded, uh, during the review session to Mr. Ruffin. I don't know if that was circulated.
No, it's out of time for us.
That's fine. Um, but, um, I can easily walk through the, the, it's really two changes, one to the plan and one to the, uh, statement of facts, uh, and it was really just to address the comments about the structural headroom in the attic. Um, and just to walk through it. So really, the only change on the plan was P6, uh, and in relation to, if you, if read with the letter that was forwarded, uh, earlier this morning, uh, it's really just to add shading and a chart to distinguish between the areas that are between zero and five feet, five feet and eight feet, and greater than eight feet. None of the attic has any structural headroom that is, uh, eight feet or greater. Uh, and it was noted, I believe, by, uh, Commissioner Ollie Brown, uh, that in certain lower-density, single-family districts such as one, R1, R2, uh, anything with a structural headroom of less than eight feet wouldn't even be considered in floor area in those districts. Um, we're not in that district. Uh, so a portion, 61% or 72, excuse me, 729.18 square feet is floor area, because it's between five feet and eight feet. Um, but the rest is not floor area, because it's less than five feet. And it's just, uh, the, that was the only change in the plans, was to show these, uh, different areas.
Okay, so, um, because we can't, as was mentioned in the review session, do anything on the fly, and because we can never, I mean, I gave earlier an instruction to our staff, our project managers, that we are going to not accept any submissions without cover letters, um, because the commission cannot spend time trying to figure out what the change is. Um, so we'll have to put this on for another decision date. Um, but as long as I've got you, not only does the cover letter have to explain where the change is, the drawings have to have a bubble on it showing only the change. And what was submitted was a 26-page set of drawings with bubbles all over the place. So I'm looking at the bubbles, and I'm like, well, why are these things bubbled? So you don't, so as an instruction to both you and the architects that you work with, bubbles are intended, or clouds are intended only to show the most recent change. Not every change that's been made over the course of the application is not relevant. We just want to know what changed between the last set of drawings and this one, right? And so, um, so you need to go back and correct that set of drawings and remove all the bubbles that are not relevant to the change that's being made now, and then give us a clean set of drawings also that's signed and sealed.
Understood, I will reach out, uh, and just to clarify, so the, the, other than page P6, um, e- essentially all those bubbles should be deleted, other than the, um,
Yes.
the modification date, and I can certainly have that adjusted. Um, do you want me to resubmit? Just that, because the proposed plans that are signed and sealed shouldn't change at all?
No, we have. They have one link set together.
Are you honest?
Yes.
Understood, and I will do that.
Uh, and by the way, the, the date on the drawings needs to change to reflect the submission date, right? So what you submitted last time, the architect has to acknowledge that the bubble set that we're getting is the same date as the new set of drawings, the set of drawings we're getting, where the only difference between what we had on the last submitted set of drawings, which is, uh-oh. I don't know. Anyway, the last submitted drawings and this set is that one bubble. And I, I'm going to underscore again, that's what bubbles are for, only to show what was changed today. Not what was changed three weeks ago, four months ago. It's, that's not how they're used, right? The equivalent would be a black line in, in a legal document. You don't show everything black line that was changed, you know, where the changes were accepted, right? You only show what you're changing today, right? Okay. So, all right, so with that, um, any other comments from commissioners, staff, anybody? Okay, so then I would, um, like to open this up to the public, because we reopened the hearing, so please, announce the case number.
It is 2019-21BZ, 2223 East 14th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, so please dial in if you have any comments on this case. Otherwise, um, if you're able to get these drawings in by Friday, we may be able to put you on for the next hearing decision, but I can't guarantee it. It might be the one after that.
Absolutely. I'll make sure to get it in as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. And be, and make sure it's correct, so that we don't have this problem again.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. All right then, so we waited 34 seconds, and so that's enough for the time delay, I think.
Are we closing or keeping it as a?
We, we can close this, yes. So, motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Okay, great. All righty, the next item is 2019-26BZ, 233 Nevin Street, also known as 2386 Butler Street, Brooklyn. Mr. Saint-Jacques, please call in, or is it, or Lisa? Oh, he's calling, okay, got him.
Okay, when you can hear us, please state your name.
Good afternoon, Frank Saint-Jacques, acre, uh, excuse me, Ackerman LLP for the applicant.
Okay, we're reopening, Madam Chair?
Uh, yeah. Sorry. All right, tell me again the, the case number.
2019-26BZ, 233 Nevin Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, thanks.
Motion to reopen, Madam, uh, Vice, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I could lose my mind there. Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
So this case is reopened. Mr., uh, Frank Saint-Jacques, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Proceed.
Uh, good afternoon, um, Madam Chair, members of the board. Uh, I understand there is a, a question relating to the, uh, separate tax lots, um, uh, for, uh, the site subject to the PCE special permit and a separate tax lot that's on the same zoning lot. Um, just to, to give a little background, uh, tax lot six, uh, is the lot, uh, where the building where the PCE use, um, is, is proposed. It's adjacent to a separate tax lot, tax lot one. Um, these lots, again, they're separate tax lots, but they're on a merged zoning lot. Uh, zoning exhibits, um, have been recorded against both tax lots. Um, and the DOB filings for the Alt One associated with the PCE use, um, change of use for tax, tax lot six reflect presence of, of the, uh, merged zoning lot. The tax lots will remain separate. Uh, they have separate buildings on them with separate, uh, building identification numbers. Um, and, you know, it's, it's our understanding that, uh, there's no issue with this scenario where there are two separate tax lots with separate buildings on a merged zoning lot, one of which is subject to a PCE special permit to allow PC use on the building on, on that separate tax lot. I, I, I'm, I guess I'm just not sure what the concern, uh, the BSA has with respect to the, uh, the the maintained existence of the separate tax lots on the single zoning lot.
I, I, I think the main issue is that, um, this grant will only relate to tax lot six, right?
Right.
Does, does it need to relate to tax lot one?
I believe it does not.
Okay, so Chase, are you okay with this, um, FPD cap?
That, that's fine. The resolution will only reflect tax lot six.
Okay. All right, good. All right then, so, um, then I don't know if we, I think that was the only issue, right? Okay, so I think we could actually, um, you know, I will invite again the public to speak on this, um, but I think, uh, we can close and vote on this one now that we clarified that. Okay, so please state the case name again, Tony?
It's 2019-26BZ, 233 Nevin Street, Brooklyn.
So if you'd like to speak on this, please dial in. Um, and in the meantime, I think, uh, having cleared up that issue, and, um, do we have any other open issues on this that anybody wants to raise? No? Okay, so then I, um, I'm going to wait a little bit, and then I'm going to make a motion to close and a motion to vote on condition. Okay, so 32 minutes have elapsed, and I only see one of our applicants in the waiting room, so I don't think she's calling in about this. Okay.
She's for the next case.
Right, okay. So then I would like to make a motion to close.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata? I can't hear you. Unmute, unmute.
Aye.
Okay.
So, um, please stay, keep yourselves unmuted, because we're going to vote on this. I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, um, and the conditions are environmental conditions that were, um, okay, so the, uh, the environmental conditions are, the approval of a PCE special permit is conditioned on the project property's partition, participation in the Office of Environmental Remediation New York City Voluntary Cleanup Program. Issuance of building permits for this PCE use shall be conditioned on the issuance of a decision document approving the remedial action work plan and an executed OER voluntary cleanup agreement, and that the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the PCE use shall be conditioned on the issuance of a notice of completion from OER. Um, Chase, should I email that to you?
Yes, please, that'd be great.
Okay, okay. So on that, um, condition, a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Okay, application's been granted.
Okay.
All righty.
Thank you very much for calling in. Um, just give me one second, please. I just need to get this to Chase before I forget.
Good?
Ee, more or less, yeah.
Okay, so the last item is 2019-202BZ, 2218 East 3rd Street, Brooklyn. Elise and, Elise, are you there?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Um, I'm also, I have the architect who's calling in. I don't know if he's called in yet.
Ah.
No, I don't, I can.
Are we reopening, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, do you want me to call it, or not, yet, yet?
Um, just give, give it a second, or maybe we don't need the, I don't know. Should we wait for the architect, Miss Follier?
Um, you had questions, and I can answer them, but just in case you had further questions, I wanted him to be able to answer them.
Okay.
Um, I can give him a call again.
Okay. Hurry up.
It's almost 1 o'clock.
Yeah. I know that Shonda, I'm sure Shonda has to go. Okay. Uh, what happened? I didn't see the new case.
He's watching.
Case is 2019-202BZ.
What?
What happened?
Hello, I'm on hold.
There he is.
Who's, who's I'm, who's speaking?
Hi, this is Joel Mealy from Mealy Associates.
Okay, architect.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Do you want us to swear in, or?
Yeah, uh, while I'm waiting for Madam Chair, are you ready?
Yeah, I just wanted to get the name. Okay, yeah, ready.
Okay, so the motion to reopen, Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabata?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, raise your right hands. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony for this board to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
So we discussed around minute 36, I just looked at the transcript, um, the greenhouse last time, and we wanted to clarify that for you. Did you see the letter from the architect by any chance in the submission?
Yeah.
Okay, um, so as he state, he can explain it further, but he wrote on it, AP 102 was to rev, remove the floor area and lot coverage, open space characteristics related to the greenhouse, which is subject to DOB approval. Note that while the FIR with the greenhouse will be compliant, the degree in non-compliance regarding lot coverage, open space will increase when the greenhouse is requested from DOB. So we discussed the problems he might have going back to DOB, and he can talk about that further, but that's why the lot coverage and the, um, greenhouse was shown because of the floor area.
That's the part I don't get. First of all, the lot coverage went, um, please turn off your YouTube video, and if you have background noise, please mute yourself. Um, but the, what I want to say is the lot coverage went down. How did it go down?
On the zoning.
Yep.
It was up for me, 37% to 50%, but Joel, you can talk about that.
No, I didn't, no.
So, uh, if I may, what happened was, my original analysis included the lot coverage of the greenhouse. Uh, when you made it clear to me that you, the greenhouse was subject to DOB approval, and you didn't want to see it, I had to adjust that number down. I listed the square footage of the greenhouse in parentheses on the plot plan, and, and in the analysis on, if you look at AP 103, where I actually show.
Slow down so that we can get to it, so. So, I looked at the drawings that were submitted right before this, and there was no greenhouse shown.
Yes, but the, but the floor aerial.
How could lot coverage have reflected something that wasn't there?
Okay, the drawing didn't show, what happened was, when the original submission included the greenhouse on the plot plan, and in the zoning analysis. When we resubmitted, taking the greenhouse off, we didn't change the zoning analysis. So it had an additional 170 square feet on it, reflecting the greenhouse. Now I've made it consistent, and I, I believe if you, if you go back to, um, the last hearing, that was the discrepancy that the vice chair had noticed, that there was a discrepancy in the zoning analysis and the, the plans.
Right, yeah.
So I fixed it, and I put a note on AP 103. If you see in the bubble, there are two bubbles on the plan, one on the bottom left, it says proposed greenhouse. I give you the size, I put in parentheses, subject to DOB approval, not included as lot coverage or floor area for BSA purposes.
No, I get that part, but so I, because that I, that I saw. So, on the drawings that were submitted in February, there's no greenhouse shown.
Yes.
And the lot coverage there was, uh, for, 55%.
Yeah, because it.
And now the lot coverage is shown at 50%.
Because the, that number included the greenhouse, even though the greenhouse wasn't shown on the plan. If you look at AP 103 submitted in February, the lot coverage is listed as 2176, not 2006.
Yeah, correct, so, all right, so here's the thing, because you're not showing us any lot coverage diagram, it's just like a numbers game, you know, we just see the numbers changing, but we don't see why. That's the first thing, the second thing is, I don't, I under, you know, in this case, you have floor area that you're not using, because this is a high-density district. But the, but, but you don't have lot coverage that you're not doing, you, you think, you have a lot coverage objection. So how can you, um, not include the lot coverage, the waiver for the lot coverage, and then you go back to DOB, I don't get it.
So, without the greenhouse, there is no waiver of lot coverage needed. If you don't want to consider the greenhouse, then how can I show we're over in lot coverage, if you don't want me to show the greenhouse?
Well, but so, but in other words, if the greenhouse requires a lot coverage waiver, and you're not getting one, then how can you have a lot cover, how can you have a greenhouse?
You, you've got me in a catch 22.
No, not exactly, what I'm suggesting is, get rid of the greenhouse, it'll make life a lot easier. I don't want to be the one that determines for DOB whether or not you can have a greenhouse, but what I do see is, you've got a lot of lot coverage, and you're asking to increase it, you're asking to increase it with a greenhouse that further reduces the rear yard from 20 feet to 15, or to 14 feet. Really, you want, you want to do this out with a greenhouse? Just get rid of it, it's a lot easier, you have a big house already.
It, it's not my house, so, I, I can't answer the, I can't answer the question, and I mean, if you want, I can go.
It's not your fault, you're the architect, right?
Yeah.
If you want to get through this, and not keep going on and on, just change the drawings so that it makes it really clear, so that you don't need this waiver. It'd be one thing if you were putting floor area in, where you're not increasing the lot coverage, but in this case, you're increasing the lot coverage, it's where you need us.
It was my understanding that, um, if I did it this way, your resolution could conditionately state that up to a 170 square foot greenhouse would be, would be acceptable.
No, because then that's us giving a greenhouse waiver, and we're not allowed to reduce the depth of the rear yard less than 20 feet, right? So effectively, we're going beyond what the 73622 allows. So I would just, for the sake of simplicity, so you can move on, your owner can build the house. If you want more floor area, put it someplace where you've already got coverage, and if you don't, then take out the greenhouse.
I'll have to go to the client.
I think we have to discuss that with the client, because we were under the impression last time, once we discussed the greenhouse, that this is what we were gonna do.
Right, so I didn't expect to see such a significant change in the drawings, and that's part of why I was like, what? We were only supposed to get a little bit of a change, I, I forget what the, there was just supposed to be one little correction made, and then we were going to be done. So I was very surprised to see that. We were just, we just needed to, um, clarify the waivers, inconsistencies in the measurements of existing and proposed, and then establishment, um, the different wall heights, to clarify the wall heights, and the Sanborn map to establish the front yard as a non-compliant condition.
I'm, I'm not trying to push it, but if you look at minute 36, if you want to go back to the record, we'll, we'll speak to the client.
Yeah, I don't want to look at minute 36. I didn't realize that this is gonna require a lot coverage waiver that's asking us to give DOB instructions to allow a greenhouse, where we're not allowed to allow a further reduction in the size of the rear yard.
Well, doesn't, does the DOB have the right to permit the greenhouse in the, in the, in the rear yard?
I have no idea.
Well, I would think the, the answer to that question is yes.
They do, if.
The only thing DOB can't grant is the square footage, whether it's floor area or a lot coverage.
Correct.
In this case, so the only question is, would DOB have an objection to the lot coverage going up above what the board agreed to allow?
They would, because it doesn't comply with the board's determination.
Okay, well, all right, I have to go back to the client.
Okay. Okay, there are architectural ways to accomplish all sorts of things. If your client wants some other architectural solution, then you should find it. I, I just think that you're, you're asking us to continue the coverage in a way that we didn't, we haven't anticipated.
Well, the lot coverage only changes from 50 to 54%, so it's not, it's not significant, but I understand the issue. I have to go to the client, I, I can't, I can't make the decision for the client, I can only advise him.
Right, well, you're the architect, you can also tell the client, right? Hey, client, this is what we have to do, hey, client.
Yeah, well, that's part of my, the way I advise him, but he, he has the ultimate power to throw me off the job and, and find somebody else to do it, and, and that, that's his prerogative.
Okay, I doubt.
I have a very quick question, is this a material issue, or will this be on for continued?
This will be on for continued.
Okay.
Okay. Because either, either the drawings go back to the way they were.
Without the greenhouse, right.
Without the greenhouse, or we need to have, I don't even really know how we resolve this frankly, so I would just say it's a lot easier. Just take it out. Okay, so, um, we now have on our screen an invitation for any member of the public who would like to speak on this, to please call in.
And the calendar number is, yikes, 2019-202bz-2218 East 3rd Street, Brooklyn.
Okay. So what I do during this time, is I ask how much time you need to go back to your client and come back with a set of drawings that reflects.
I think it depends what the client does, so.
Elise, I would suspect that the client will take the greenhouse away. It shouldn't take me more than a week to get back. He's gonna make a decision overnight, and I'm gonna change the plan. And if the plan entails taking the greenhouse off, it's very easy, I just take the greenhouse off.
Okay, and correct the calculations, and while you're at it.
So the calculations won't change, because I never included the greenhouse in the calculations. On the most recent submittal.
Yeah, but.
I only have a note about it, I'll take the note off.
No, so because the number changed when you had no greenhouse on it, you had no greenhouse on the last submission, and then you had no greenhouse on this submission, and the number went down, so can you give us a lot coverage calculation?
The lot coverage calculation doesn't change, it's on AP 103.
Sorry.
I will remove the, the note about the fact that we not excluding 100, I'm not excluding anything anymore, all I was excluding was the greenhouse.
Do you have a calculation drawing, oh, you do, first floor, no, that's, that's an area diagram.
On the right side, lot coverage equals first floor equals 1977, second floor overhang.
Wait, 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 slow down, where are you?
On AP 103.
Yeah?
On the right side, below the little, the three little boxes showing that the legend, there's a lot coverage calculation that says it's equal to the first floor, which is 1977, plus the second floor overhang.
Lot, first floor is, says, first floor, oh, this is on 26, sorry, I'm not looking at the right one. AP 103, okay, so first floor, 1977, which is the whole floor.
Second floor, overhang.
The overhang is seven, sorry.
Seven foot eight by five foot 10.
Just adding the 29 square feet for, to include the overhang, is what you're saying.
Right, yes.
So it gets you to 2006.
Right, I always excluded, except on the first submission, I always excluded the 170.
Okay.
Until.
All right.
So then I'll just take the bubble off, because I won't have an exclusion anymore, and just, well, I'll put the bubble around 2006, but I won't have that note.
Okay, okay, good. And then please, a cover letter from Elise.
Right.
Is full of there, plans to change, okay, great. All right, so then, um, I don't know if we can, can we close? I don't know if we can close. We can, we can close, and, and soon, let's do it like this, we close assuming you're doing what we're saying, taking the greenhouse off, and so we're back to kind of where we were. So let's, a motion to close on this, then.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? I, I couldn't hear you, could you repeat that?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
So it's closed.
Okay, great, all right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Submit in a week, or whatever?
Well, as soon as he can, so it'll be based on when he can submit, when we're able to put this on for decision. If you, so what we've been doing is, if you can submit by Friday, we could put it on for decision for the next hearing, if you can, then it would be the one after.
I will try to do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this concludes the public hearing for June 1st, 2020, 10 a.m. session. We'll resume at, um, I guess, 2, 2 o'clock, for the afternoon session.
Thank you. Thank you all, sorry it took longer than expected.
Aye.
All right, bye.
Bye, thanks.